Hi, everyone. Thanks for joining us this evening. It got so quiet just in the last five minutes. It's like, we're all just waiting. So, thank you. Before I officially call the meeting to order, I will just run through what's on our agenda. Helps us all to be on the same page and it's especially nice to have folks joining us here in the council chamber. So, thank you for that and thank you to those who are joining us on BevCam. Thank you to Kim from BevCam being here keeping us streaming so that we're accessible and easy for people to follow along wherever they may be. So, this evening, we have a presentation right at the start of our agenda from Kestrel Education Adventures. So, we'll be looking forward to hearing from them. We have three residents who have signed up to speak, each for three minutes. So, we'll go to those folks. As time allows, we'll work them in between potentially public hearings because we do have four public hearings this evening and the first is posted for 7:30. And so, we'll have to take those in the order that they appear and are posted. And then, we have some routine business that we'll be working through. We'll take a break for some subcommittee work and we'll come back to finish everything up. So, with that, I'll officially call to order this regular meeting of the Beverly City Council, Monday, March 17th, 2025, 7 o'clock PM. Ms. Kent, will you please call the roll?
Bowen.
Here.
Crowley.
Here.
Feldman.
Here.
Hausmann.
Here.
Spang.
Here.
St. Holier.
Here.
Sweeney.
Yep.
And Flowers.
Here. Thank you, Ms. Kent. Counselor Feldman, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you very much, Counselor Feldman. I do want to just take a moment to mention some members of our city staff and leadership who are here with us this evening. Mr. Brian Ailes, our city finance director is here with us this evening. Thank you very much, Mr. Ailes. We have Eric Barber, our Assistant Commissioner of Public Services here with us. Thank you, Mr. Barber. Jerry Perry, our city council budget analyst is here with us as well. Thank you very much, Mr. Perry. And we do have Ward Six School Committee Member, Lurinda Visnick, back in her familiar bench back there. Nice to have you back in the council chambers, Ms. Visnick. So, I did mention we have a presentation right at the top of our agenda. So, we'll go right to Jessica Cagle and Kestrel Education Adventures. We're happy to have you with us. Counselors, as you know, the presentations are sort of slots of 15 minutes, including questions and answers. So, we'll get to hear from Kestrel and then have a chance to have questions as time allows. Thank you very much.
Thank you for having us. Should I be facing, which way do the presenters normally address?
Typically towards the council.
Okay.
I know it feels a little bit funny, but you can present this way and then BevCam will help make sure that everybody following can see you as well.
All right. So, yeah, I'm presenting on behalf of Kestrel and we also have a professional biologist here who is also presenting with me, Kyla Constant. So, thank you and thank you especially for being willing to reschedule after I couldn't make it in January. I really appreciate the flexibility. So, the presentation that we have for you is about the idea of having an ecological literacy plan for the city of Beverly. So, what we're going to do is present some, just because we have a short time, we're going to present three main issues. There are, of course, many other things that an ecological literacy plan could address, but we're going to focus on three of them and we're going to share some of our favorite species and interesting things about them in hopes that maybe you'll go out and find them. And I want to say, now that it's 7 o'clock on the first warm rainy night of spring that I am leaving immediately after this, because there are 75 people on a call list to go see if there's a big frog and salamander migration this evening. So, it's really timely because some of the presentation is about them and this is probably the first big night of migration. We'll get to that a little bit more. Is this one you follow or me?
You.
Okay. Sorry. So, one problem that my colleagues and I have noticed a lot is that there's a lot of misinformation or just lack of information about wildlife and it causes a lot of confusion about the value of wildlife and what they are doing here and how they impact people and whether or not is there really a choice between we like wildlife, but humans are more important or, you know, the degree to which they're actually interconnected. So, it's really hard, we find, to enact really good effective policy without really a thorough understanding of wildlife and trees and other plant life within the city. So, we want to propose the idea being to have a specific plan to increase ecological literacy among city employees and the residents. And what we're hoping for is decisions that take specific species of living things into account. And again, this isn't just for them. All the things that we're talking about tonight actually impact the well-being of the residents of Beverly, of the human residents of Beverly in addition to the non-human residents of Beverly. And we would love to see increased usage of public land for nature study and awareness and recreation as well and greater connection to New England nature.
Yeah. So, as Jessica mentioned at the start of the presentation, tonight, we'll be providing some basic background information focused on three priority areas. We chose these because it's particularly important for like entire ecosystem health. If you want to pop over to the next slide here. So, we chose native trees, breeding amphibians and predators. Within these topics, there are specific changes that we can make to our behavior that can positively impact nature and our residents within the city of Beverly. Next slide. So, the first topic is native trees. Something that many people don't know is that trees are not a taxonomic group. It's simply a strategy that plants use to grow taller and to have these like, you know, massive trunks and be nice and strong. So, this area is a priority for us because we want to preserve native trees and, sorry, I haven't done public speaking in a long time, so I'm a little bit nervous.
You're doing great, Karen.
Sorry. So, a tree's role within an ecosystem differs by the growth stage of the tree, the time of year, and by the kind of tree. For example, trees that don't shed their leaves, commonly known as evergreens, and trees that produce berry-like fruits in late fall are especially important to wildlife during winter, but come summer, some animals will prefer trees that host a variety of tasty insects over those trees that they may have gotten use out of during the winter months. And all trees have some sort of ecological value, but trees that are native to the North Shore are adapted to our environmental conditions, can often grow larger and faster than non-native trees, and they've evolved alongside our wildlife. And so, Jessica's going to tell you a little bit more about some of the trees that you can find around the city.
Yeah. And I just picked three highlight trees, but I realized that I skipped introductions. So, thank you for introducing Kestrel, but I just wanted to say, I'm Jessica Cagle. I'm the founder and director of Kestrel Educational Adventures, which is a nonprofit that does field science education for all the public school districts in this area, all the Beverly Public Elementary Schools, and Manchester, Essex, Gloucester, and Rockport are all involved currently. And Kyla is a volunteer with Kestrel and also a wildlife biologist.
Yeah.
And photographer.
Yeah.
So, I'm just highlighting three of my favorite trees. There are obviously many wonderful trees and I also just want to back up and add that all the photos in this presentation are our photos. We took them in Beverly. Every photo is from here. So, American beech is a great tree. It has outstanding shade value and it's mass-bearing, which means it makes a, its little nut that it makes is one of the most valuable wildlife foods in the forest. The little nuts made by beech trees can fatten up everything from chipmunks to bears. It is a primary food source for every animal in the size range between chipmunks and bears and mice. So, actually, most of the animals that might live anywhere nearby, we don't have bears in Beverly, but if we did, they'd be eating the beech nuts. So, they are a great tree to preserve because of their, they are basically an indicator of an old forest and a really good source. People for a really long time have also relied for thousands of years on the nuts of the beech tree because they're so high in nutrition. Another tree that I love is a great one for city planting. Beech trees grow really slowly, but yellow birch trees grow a little bit faster and black and yellow birch trees both have little comb-like fruits. They're a really important food source for migratory birds, finches and other songbirds, and they're great winter cover. They are just beautiful trees. I planted a very close relative, a black birch in my yard. It was like this big. It actually was delivered during the pandemic and now it's like 12 feet tall already and producing a ton of seeds that the birds come and feed at. And so, they are, lots of them within the city of Beverly, even downtown. I live right off Cabot, so they can grow right here. Another really common one that grows throughout Beverly and can grow right, it could be a straight tree, is the black cherry, which grows really fast and it has these beautiful blossoms on stalks like you can see here and it makes little tiny cherries. And the cherries are enormously popular among wildlife and occasionally children will taste them if they go to Kestrel camp. I wouldn't recommend eating too many in one sitting, but you can, you can sample black cherry. So, when you have any of these trees, it's really important to preserve them because they provide cover and well-being and attract wildlife, which increases well-being for people as well. Amphibians, my probably sing, oh, sorry.
Yeah, sorry. This one's my slide. So, our second priority topic are amphibians, which obviously Jessica is super excited about. Amphibians are simply a class of animals that are closely related to reptiles and that includes frogs, toads, and salamanders. And Beverly has many species, at least 10, and our species generally live in woodlands. And when it's warm and moist enough in early spring, like this evening, many species migrate en masse from these woodlands to these temporary pools of water that don't have fish in them because fish will eat, you know, the eggs and the babies. And they go there to lay their eggs and because we have a lot of roadways that bisect their habitat and they migrate at night and they're pretty slow, they're extremely prone to being ran over by vehicles. So, yeah, with that in mind, let's meet a couple of our local amphibians.
So, these highlight slides were actually taken last year during the last good migration night and it's not just random. It is just the first few warm rainy nights of spring when every amphibian comes out of its winter hiding. Not, well, yeah, pretty much every amphibian that breeds in the water, which is all of them, except for the red-backed salamander, will come out and if there is a road between their winter habitat and their breeding habitat, they are crossing that road. So, without good traffic management, you can wipe out an entire population in like two nights and then they're gone. So, it is really, really important for policymakers to understand about amphibians because when you have the entire population migrating in such a short window of time during a night when there's such poor visibility for driving, it is a serious issue. So, vernal pools, the breeding habitat, is like inch for inch, one of the most productive habitats in existence. Most of the energy from the forest that gets up into predators at some point is touching the energy that comes from vernal pools. There are massive, massive quantities of frogs and salamanders coming out of these tiny little shallow ponds that at some point aren't even there. Wood frogs are a huge source for broad-winged hawks, which actually stage their migration back south based on when the wood frogs are done emerging from the ponds. They feed foxes and otters and hawks and owls and they live anywhere within half a mile of a breeding pool. They do not live in water. They live in the woods their entire lives except for about one week when they all gather at ponds and make a quacking sound and everyone's like, so many ducks tonight, but I can't, I'm like, are they invisible ducks? That's what I always say. Yeah, yeah, I heard all the ducks. I can't find the ducks. They're not ducks. They're wood frogs. One of my other favorites, the spotted salamander, also does not live in water. They live underground their entire lives except for like this week when they're all out migrating across roads and going to do this amazing group dance called the Congress when they actually do this dance all together in the shallow vernal pools. Last year, we got to see a little of it at Camp Paradise in mid-March. And when they're done, they actually leave the eggs there and go back to the forest and we just hope that the eggs will survive. We had a group monitoring them last year and unfortunately, the egg mass we were monitoring, none of them survived at the Camp Paradise vernal pool. So, trying to do a little more conservation work over there. So, I have a little video that I took during the night that we had a group out last year. Oh, can't play this file. Oh, I guess I don't have a video. Oh, well. There was a really cool video of the spotted salamanders underwater at the vernal pool at Camp Paradise. We also had this, this picture up top is the volunteers that I went out with. We did a little mini big night. We didn't have, we could not in time work with the city to get the roads slowed or closed. So, the police chief advised me not to take all the many, many volunteers that came to us offering to shepherd the amphibians across the road. So, we didn't take the big group, but we had four of us and we got our traffic safety vests and headlamps and buckets. And what we did was we had someone watching for traffic and someone else would cross them during the rainiest night. And then, everybody else went home and I stayed there for like three more hours because just couldn't let them all get run over. But Amherst does this especially well, but there are other cities throughout New England where the city makes a decision to close roads and then an associated nonprofit that they work with will train and organize and equip the staff and they will do the conservation work. But we can't, I think the police chief was right, we can't have all kinds of volunteers out on the, the roads where the amphibians are getting run over are also not safe for all kinds of public volunteers to stand on on a rainy night.
And our final area of priority this evening are predators, which are essential to ecological and human health despite being misunderstood and maligned. Through hunting, they keep prey animal populations at sustainable levels, which can in turn benefit plant communities and soil health, among other things. In areas with human infrastructure, predators can help reduce populations of animals that we consider pests, including those that are invasive and carry vector-borne diseases like rats. But unfortunately, predators are disproportionately impacted by chemical pest management such as second-generation anticoagulant rodenticides or ESKARs. ESKARs in particular are bad news for our native raptors and for our large mammalian predators as well because the anticoagulants often cause organ failure and death.
Every, sorry.
Oh, no.
Every wildlife rehabilitator that I know is in tears routinely because they are given raptor after raptor after coyote after fox and only to stay up literally all night for days on end and watch them die anyway. That is, every single time you put out poison traps or you ask a restaurant to put out poison traps or you let a developer put out poison traps, there is a developer staying up all night trying to save things that die anyway.
Yeah. Mass Audubon did a study in 20-
Rehabber, not developer, sorry.
Sorry.
Rehabber, I meant to say.
Mass Audubon did a study in 2019 where they tested all of the red-tailed hawks that came into like a certain rehabilitation center and over 90% of the hawks tested positive for this particular kind of rodenticide, which is quite staggering.
So, a couple of highlights. Eastern coyote, a lot of people really misunderstand these. It's true that they're a new arrival to New England. However, they are considered native by most biologists because if an animal walks here or flies here or moves here on its own power, it is just considered range expansion, which is why we have robins. Robins are also a range expansion species. So, any animal that was not physically brought here by humans is generally considered a native species. They are omnivorous. They mostly eat rabbits, rodents, and fruits. They are not here because we're building on their habitat and we're taking away their land. They are here because they do really, really well in cities and suburbs. They like edge habitat because edge habitat grows raspberries, it grows blueberries, it grows cherry trees, and it has lots of rabbits and rodents. So, they are here because they moved to New England because we wiped out wolves deliberately and because we built suburbs with lots of fields and edges and things like that. No predator, no top predator ever requires population management according to any wildlife biologist that works for any of the fish and wildlife departments in any New England state or any other wildlife biologist I've talked to. So, most people think they can overrun us. They cannot. Predators will adjust their litters, especially coyotes, based on available space and food. And just because you see them more doesn't mean they're overrunning. They can't, they can't overrun because their population is controlled by resources. They are considered beneficial. Oh, I had the most beautiful coyote video made by the seventh graders who put trail cameras up and we got them and a whole family is crossing rivers and walking across the ice, but sorry.
I was gonna say, we, we are at about 15 minutes now. So, I, just because of what we have ahead, I just need to ask you to just wrap up. But for your videos, if you want to send them to the clerk as well, I know they wouldn't play for you, but the clerk can share them out with the council and that way everyone can get a chance to see them as well.
Okay. And the last one is fishers, also a really important predator. They were almost completely wiped out by the fur trade and have recovered, which is why you're seeing more of them because of efforts to recover them on purpose. Almost everything you hear about fishers is not true. They're quiet most of the time. They're very secretive. There's almost no conflict between fishers and people and there's almost no evidence that they routinely take pets either. And studies have actually shown by analyzing stomach contents that they very, very rarely take pets. A lot of people, their pet is missing, so they say a fisher took it, but it, it can happen, but it's not a thing that happens all the time. So, I had beautiful fisher video, which we'll skip. So, our suggestion is to have more public outreach events, increase usage of trails and a home base for nature learning. Where I grew up, we had a community nature center on public land where you could go and borrow stuff and learn about animals and go out on trails. And this is one of the reasons why I am standing here in a Kestrel t-shirt. My family does not know anything about wildlife. Hopefully, they're not listening, but they took me to the Greenberg Nature Center in Westchester, New York, and that's one of the main reasons I grew up caring a lot about nature. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you both for being here and presenting. We are sort of at the limit of our time. So, counselors, I would encourage you, if you have questions or you want to follow up, I know that Jessica and her team, Cagle and her team are very responsive and obviously really passionate about what they do and happy to share information. So, is it okay if counselors would have reached out to you with any follow-up that they may have?
Yes.
And please do send your videos to Ms. Kent and we'll get those shared.
I will send the videos.
Thank you very much. All right. And good luck with the amphibian crossing this evening as well. Thank you for your time and your presentation. We will go now to some of our resident speakers who have signed up. And so, these are spots that appear in our regular meetings, on our regular meeting agendas. There are up to five spots of three minutes each. They can be signed up for by contacting the clerk's office no later than 9:30 the morning of the meeting. And we do give those spots first come, first served. Vice President Crowley is already getting his timer ready here, so you'll have three minutes. And if you hear the timer go off, we'll ask you to please draw your remarks to a close at that point. And the first speaker who signed up was Dr. Michael Spurber. So, Dr. Spurber, if you would come on up, begin with your name and address for the record and then when you hear Vice President Crowley's timer go off, if you would draw your remarks to a close at that point so we can make sure everyone gets an equal amount of time. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Mike Spurber and I live at 15 Ive Street in Beverly. And I'm here today, a way of expressing gratitude to the city council for removing the no loitering sign in the gazebo in Beverly Commons, which I felt was discriminatory to homeless people. Can I be heard okay?
Yes.
By way of expressing thanks, I wrote a short poem that I dedicate to the members of the city council. It's called "In Praise of Loitering." The body is unfettered and frolics in the leafy green. The mind is unconfined and has thoughts keen and serene. No loitering is the space the devil schemes and dreams. Loitering is the abode of gods, poets, and kings. I left one thing out. I give gratitude for removing that sign, but also for years of safe living in a friendly community, clean. And I express my gratitude to the city council for that as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Spurber. Thanks for being here with us this evening. Our next speaker who signed up for this evening is Kira Fabrizio. And yes, I was gonna say, you can go to the podium there and if you also would begin with your name and address for the record and then similarly, if you hear Vice President Crowley's timer, if you would draw your remarks to a close.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Hello, counselors. I am Kira Fabrizio. My address is 5 Lawn Bank Road. I'm here speaking as a citizen of Beverly in support of the specialized building code that you have under consideration. I have a PhD in economics and I've spent my career as a business school professor, most recently developing the Energy and Environment Program at Boston University. I've been present at the Clean Energy Advisory Council meetings where they've been discussing the specialized energy code. So, I've heard from developers both local and from other towns across the state that have already developed and adopted this code. I've heard thoughtful and very thorough discussions in part, in, as part of that committee and I've heard how those have taken place very respectfully, thoroughly, thoughtfully across all perspectives. So, I just encourage you to give weight to the recommendations of the committee in support of the specialized code. I'd like to add some brief comments on one point that's particularly compelling to me based on the academic research around standard setting. It's evident from what we've heard that developers are already adopting much of what's in the proposed code, which underscores the feasibility of the practices. But the benefits of adopting a standardized code like this is to provide coordination in the marketplace, which has some specific benefits. First, that standard provides consistency and predictability for the developers, so there's consensus on the specifications for what should be built. Second, the standards promote learning by doing because of this consensus for all the developers and the tradespeople while they increase their knowledge base and their capabilities, which help deliver on this standard over time. And third, this drives cost reductions through both scale economies and that learning by doing process so that they're, they're learning and developing these technologies and practices that are relevant for that specialized code, reducing that total cost of building over time. These cost-saving, these cost savings benefit both the developers and the ultimate homeowners or residents. All of these are direct economic benefits of adopting the specialized building code. Of course, these are in addition to the very considerable public benefits of helping to reduce the climate impact of our building stock, our housing stock, and also providing the potential benefit for the city of being involved in this program. So, I urge the council to adopt the specialized building code. So I urge the council to adopt the Specialized Building Code. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Fabrizio. Thanks for being here with us. And Mr. Jordan Stutt is our third speaker signed up, and we'll sneak you right in here before our first public hearing. Mr. Stutt, if you would begin with your name and address for the record, if you hear Vice President Crowley's timer when it's ready, if you would draw your remarks to a close.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jordan Stutt, I live at 113 and 1/2 Bridge Street in Beverly. Thank you all again for all the time that you've poured into this. I was here in early January to present and recommend adoption of the Specialized Energy Code. I suggested that it would likely be the start of a dialogue, and that it was. You all have really provided some thoughtful questions. You've paid great attention to detail. I think you've helped us all understand the implications of adopting this code. I feel more confident than ever that it is good for Beverly, but I appreciate the thoughtful approach you're all taking to making that own decision, that decision on your own. I do want to start by making a correction to a statement I made on Monday at the Legislative Affairs Subcommittee meeting. I stated that the accelerator grant program of up to $1 million that Beverly would be eligible for could only be applied to clean energy projects tied to new construction municipal buildings. In fact, that can be applied to a wide range of decarbonization projects at new or existing buildings. So it could be solar on roofs, it could be replacing an aging HVAC system with an electric air source heat pump system, it could be energy efficiency measures. So there's a wide range of ways that the city could apply that $1 million. Moving forward, I do want to focus on a couple items that have come up throughout this discussion that I think merit further dialogue, and that's whether or not the city council chooses to adopt the Specialized Energy Code. The first of those is around affordable housing. We've heard a lot of concern and good questions from the city council on this issue. We've heard from developers here in Beverly and elsewhere about the challenges that they're facing. We've heard that when it comes to new multifamily housing, affordable housing in the larger category, many developers are already going to the Specialized Energy Code compliant passive house standard. But when it comes to small, single-family homes, small multifamily homes, we're just not seeing much new development, if any at all, in Beverly. So I'd love to figure out what the challenges are that are facing that segment of our housing stock, how we get more of it. Clearly, it's not the Specialized Energy Code that is holding that back, but let's assess what the real challenges are and work towards solutions that we can actually implement here in Beverly and make sure we're meeting the needs on affordable housing. The second issue that's come up quite a bit is the challenge that folks are facing when it comes to interconnection, bringing on new load, installing new solar, and navigating that process with National Grid. That's something that Andrew DeFranzo raised with us, Councilor Rotundo. It's something you've noted. We've talked about it at length at the CAC. And Councilor Housman, I know you've already begun some planning. I will just wrap up by saying that we are here as eager partners to work with you all and make sure that we are keeping the spotlight on that challenge and developing real solutions to help anybody overcome that issue. Thanks again for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Stutt, for being here with us this evening. We will go right to our first public hearing, which is on order number 73, and we'll open that now. Ms. Kent.
Order number 73, the City of Beverly ordered that the City Council, the City of Beverly, hold a public hearing on Monday, March 17, 2025, at 7:30 PM at 191 Cabot Street, 3rd Floor, Council Chambers, relative to a transfer request of OPEB. Yeah. Relative to a transfer of $214,278 from the city's certified free cash balance to be placed in the city's OPEB trust, and this was in the newspaper on March 7.
Thank you very much, Ms. Kent. I want to mention any members of the public who are here to speak in this or any of the following public hearings can sign up to speak on the sheets that are on the table over by the window. Just check to be sure you're signing up for the public hearing that you're interested in speaking in, the topic you're interested in speaking on. We'll take public comment in the order it's received on the sheet. Mr. Ailes is already at the podium and ready to go, our finance director, so we'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening, councilors. We have before us this evening a series of requests which are seeking to transfer cash from, excuse me, the certified free cash balance that the city holds into a variety of areas. The one which is order number 73, which is this public hearing that we're talking about now, as noted by Mrs. Kent, is for a transfer of $214,278 into the city's OPEB trust fund. As you're all aware, this is an annual occurrence. Our financial policies require that the mayor request a transfer of no less than 2% of the certified free cash balance each year to be transferred into the OPEB trust. The OPEB trust, or OPEB, stands for Other Post-Employment Benefits, and it's an obligation that the city incurs by employing staff under Chapter 32. And so those staff, when they retire, ultimately are able to benefit from certain healthcare plans and things that are offered under the provisions of the Massachusetts Retirement Law. And so this seeks to set funds aside in an effort to pay for those costs that we're going to incur in the future. As of our most recent OPEB valuation report, which was dated as of 6/30/2024, the city has an outstanding OPEB liability of $225 million. Obviously, I'm rounding. Currently, with this transfer, we would have roughly $3.3 million sitting in the trust fund, and so the net unfunded liability, if this is approved, would stand at $222 million. We've been actually very aggressive and successful in bringing that long-term liability down over the last few years. We've done some plan restructuring, and this body adopted the provisions of the trust, and we've been annually transferring into that fund. We also transfer annually the value of one sick day for every employee. They basically give that day back to the city, and the value of that is then transferred into this trust as well. So the plan over time is that this trust fund continues to grow so that eventually we're able to pay for the obligations that we're legally bound to provide to retirees. So I'll stop there. I'm sure you might have some questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ailes. Councilors, are there questions for Councilor Housman?
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening, Mr. Ailes. This transfer is consistent with sort of a long-term plan for retiring the OPEB benefits, consistent with the financial policies and objectives promulgated by the administration?
That's correct.
And what does this represent in terms of percentage range within the target set by that document?
Yeah, so there isn't a target in terms of how much the value of the trust fund gets to, but this balance in the trust fund will represent 1.3%, 1.3% of the overall obligation of this. The longer-term plan that the city has is, as you know, we annually contribute to the retirement obligation that we have, and that's to the tune of about $14 million or so a year in the annual operating budget. That is due to be retired, or the obligation will be met, which is required by law for us to meet, but that will be met by '32, 2032 is the targeted date, or 2033, right in that range. At that point, that obligation will drop off, and there will be room to then be more aggressive with this component of the city's long-term liability and begin paying that down at a more aggressive rate.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Sweeney.
Thank you, Madam President. To the point you just made, Mr. Ailes, so it sounds like there isn't a set year when we would plan to pay off a very sizable OPEB liability here, but the plan is continue making payments along the 2% line in years to come until the retirement obligation is met? And then the entirety of that payment would be put into OPEB in addition to the 2%? Is that a general strategy, or have more firm commitments been made to that end?
So I think that's a conversation to be had when we get closer there. There are certainly competing priorities. The other factor that can play into this is whether or not we, as a municipality, will become legally obligated to set these funds aside like we are with the pension system. We're legally required to set those funds aside. We're not yet legally required to set the OPEB funds aside. The other piece that plays into this is we currently pay as you go. So every year when we come to you with a budget, there is a budget for healthcare premiums that the city pays on behalf of its employees and its retirees. The OPEB liability is effectively the portion of the premium for retirees that the city currently pays every year as we go. So if there are resources available in a trust fund to offset those costs, theoretically the obligation within our health budget, healthcare budget, would go down correspondingly as well. So it's all of those things playing together that would, we would obviously come before the council and explain all this and make a recommendation at that point.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ailes, for that explanation. Do you know the amount that we pay annually in premiums for retiree healthcare at this point?
It's about $4 million.
Okay, so.
Four to $6 million, I think, is the number that sticks in my head, of the $11 to $12 million.
So with that in mind, there's not a year in the foreseeable future where we would actually be drawing from this trust fund to pay? We're going to maintain a pay-as-you-go structure for the foreseeable future in addition to these deposits?
Yes, yes.
And the last question I have, you mentioned there's no legal obligation at this point for the city to put funding into this trust, but I know that bond rating agencies look at it. Is there any input that we've received in a recent rating that we're on the right path? We're not being aggressive enough? Have you gotten any formal feedback through that mechanism?
Yeah, well, when we get our ratings reports, there's a few different areas that the report will key in on and basically highlight as the areas to focus on. We do a great job in a number of those, but I regret to say probably the one we're weakest in as a municipality is, as of our last report, is debt and long-term liability. Now, we've done a lot of work on the debt structure, and our debt ratios have improved significantly over the last five years, and since the last time they've come in and really done a thorough review. So I'm feeling that we're less vulnerable in that area, but the long-term liabilities are real, and they do note them, and in terms of our peer communities and where we rank, we're a little bit behind in terms of our funding ratios in these areas.
Okay, thank you for that, Mr. Ailes.
Thank you, Councilor. Any other questions for Mr. Ailes from the council? Mr. Perry, our budget analyst, anything you'd like to add to this conversation?
Good evening, Madam President, members of the council. There's not much I can add to that. Mr. Ailes and some of you took all my thunder. Bottom line to it, I would just add to that. I am not aware, there are a couple out there, but in general, the OPEB liabilities for federal, state, and local governments is so large that it's physically impossible to pay it down in the foreseeable future in most of them. It would literally make most governments go bankrupt. So the rating agencies are looking for some kind of a, you know, input, if you will, to this, which I think in general we do a pretty good job. We've been doing this several years. Bottom line, Madam President, as your budget analyst, I would recommend adoption of this proposal.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. Ms. Kent has the sign-up sheet for public comment. There is none for this public hearing, but were there any members of the public here who wish to speak in this public hearing? Okay, seeing none, I'll close that public hearing and refer it back to the Committee on Finance and Property for further action this evening. This brings us to just about 7:45, and so we can go ahead and open our posted public hearing on order number 73. Ms. Kent.
Order 73, City of Beverly ordered that the City Council of the City of Beverly hold a public hearing on Monday, March 17, 2025, at 7:45 PM at 191 Cabot Street, 3rd Floor, Council Chambers, relative to a transfer request of $1,071,390,000 from the city's certified free cash balance to be placed in the city's stabilization fund. And this was in the news on March 7.
Thank you, Ms. Kent. Mr. Ailes, I see you're back at the podium, ready to go, so we'll turn it back over to you to get this one started.
Yeah, I'm not going to go too far for the next few minutes, huh?
That makes sense.
So this is similar to the transfer to the OPEB trust in that it is prescribed in our operating financial policies and is noted as somewhat of a best practice in terms of supporting a stabilization fund that's designed to help this city through an extra session and any kind of erosion of revenue sources that a recession could carry with it and historically has carried with it. The request is for a 10% of the free cash certification value be transferred. What I failed to mention in my previous remarks was that the certified free cash balance as of June 30, 2024, was $10,713,896. Therefore, this represents 10% of that certification level at $1,071,390. The rationale behind the 10% mark for this transfer has to do with the fact that our budget grows every year. And so as the budget grows, the revenues that we rely on every year to support that budget and those operations grow as well. And we know that there are certain areas within our revenue streams that are particularly vulnerable to an economic downturn, and the largest of which being state aid. And we've looked historically at how state aid has reacted to recessions and how that has impacted Beverly particularly. We've looked at the length of time that reductions in those revenues occurred over the last few recessions, and we've been able to put a figure and a range as to what that value means in today's dollars. And so we've set a target range for our stabilization funds at 13% to 15%, I'm sorry, 10% to 15% of an annual operating budget. And so as every year the annual operating budget grows, this 10% of the free cash certification is designed to keep pace, to maintain that ratio of reserves to operating budget. And so this amount, if transferred, would place the value of the stabilization fund, both the operating stabilization fund, and we also have $2 million in a debt stabilization fund. But the combined value of that, if this transfer is approved, would place it at 13.5% of our annual operating budget, so squarely right in the target range of where we'd ideally like to see the stabilization fund balances remain. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Ailes. Councilor Feldman, please.
Yes, thank you. My one question was the debt stabilization fund. Can you just remind me of what we use that for? I know the stabilization fund, but I'm not remembering what this is.
Sure.
Reference to.
So there's, I'll go back in my time machine about a decade ago. When I first started here, there was about $750,000 stabilization fund for the city. That's all that existed. And it was specifically a debt stabilization fund. Now, statute allows for debt stabilization, which you can use to offset debt, but it also allows for a general stabilization, which in this case, the majority of our stabilization is a general stabilization. So within the first, I believe it was year or two of Mayor Cahill in office, he came to the city council and said, "We should establish a general stabilization fund designed specifically for recession-proofing operations within the city." And so we established it by statute, by local option, and it allowed us to begin transferring funds into that stabilization fund. The debt fund, because when Mayor Cahill took office, it was mid-budget year, there was also an additional $250,000 transfer that had already been voted as part of the budget. So at the close of that first fiscal year, there was $1 million in the debt stabilization fund. We haven't touched it since then. What it was originally designed to help with was some of the debt burden associated with the building of the high school. But fortunately, because rates began getting low, we were able to afford the debt without needing to tap that stabilization fund. So it's been sitting there, gaining interest and returning its interest back into the stabilization fund. Last year, when we were requesting funds be transferred from free cash to roads and sidewalk work, it was the administration's recommendation that in addition to that transfer, we also put an additional $1 million into the debt stabilization fund. And the thought there at the time, and we still hold this as a thought, is that we are worried about the ability of the city to service large projects as they surface, multimillion-dollar projects. And part of that is because the debt budget within the operating budget is finite. It's only so big. And so all of our other costs are somewhat fixed or related to personnel, so there's really no really no room to grow the debt budget. So as debt payments fall off and we have room within the debt budget, we can layer in new debt, but there's going to be times with these larger projects where we either need to use that debt stabilization to pay off principal so that we can afford the debt payment, like a mortgage in your own personal budget, or we can use that to put towards debt service payments for bonds that we've already issued. And so that's the design behind it. Answer your question? Okay.
Thank you, Counselor Feldman. Counselor Hausmann.
I'd like to actually hold my question for our both analysts instead of Mr. Ailes.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll come back to you. Are there other, Counselor Bowen?
Thank you. I'd like to ask the same question I've asked the last couple of years, which is very much support continuing to tuck money away so that our stabilization fund remains within that happy range of 10 to 15% of our operating budget, and knowing that that operating budget continues to grow year on year, we have to keep tucking away more. And as our free cash balances have ticked up and we have some flexibility in how we use them, just want to be sure that this is the right amount versus half the amount that's proposed or three-quarters of the amount that's proposed, which would still keep us above halfway in that range that we're targeting, you know, above 12% of our, of the general fund budget or the operating budget, but would leave a meaningful amount for other projects that are intended to be funded by free cash. So, you know, a solid $250,000, $500,000 could make a meaningful impact on some of the priorities we have for this year potentially, without jeopardizing our readiness for future recessions. So want to just reality test that, if there's, you know, more to it than that. I know in the past, the answer has been like, well, we're still in the 11%, 12% range, but as we keep getting higher within that range, I'll keep asking the question. And then also thinking about, are there free cash priorities that we have already talked about, roads and sidewalks, paying down the family dollar buildings, some other things that where free cash is part of the strategy that might not fit if we make this transfer in its entirety right now?
Yeah, I think, Counselor, that it's always good to have the conversation. You know, we're fortunate because this past year, as many of you know, interest rates have been very good. So the holdings that we have in the stabilization fund has actually generated significant returns. We hold it in what's called the MMDT, which is the Mass Municipal Depository Trust. Those rates have been in excess of 5%. They float their money nightly through different vehicles, safe vehicles and liquid vehicles that allow them to maximize their return, and they do it for a number of city towns throughout the Commonwealth. So we're in a position where the uptick that you've seen is really a result of those returns, not necessarily of the deposit amounts that have been going in. The deposit amounts have really actually been almost right where they need to be to kind of maintain that sweet spot that we're trying to hit. So it's always good to have the conversation. I think in terms of our priorities for free cash, there's never enough resources to do everything we want to do. We all know that. But this year, with the 10.7 million, we've proposed this 10% transfer, we've proposed the 2% transfer. Earlier this year, you all approved a transfer to the Harbor Master Boat Grant for $58,000. So that's been approved. We have another request related to some school costs that we'll be taking up this evening. And we also have another one this evening related to the fuel depot down at the DPS campus that needs to be replaced. So that's everything that's been proposed so far. In addition to that, we know that we'll be looking to this resource to fund roads and sidewalks for the FY '26 construction and budget season. So we've always kind of earmarked that at about 2.7 million. That's historically over the last few years where we've been able to fund roads and sidewalks, and we don't see that being a difference this year at this point. We also have outstanding a loan on the fire station, the work that we were doing on the fire station. That's about a $1.5 million loan that we ultimately would like to rescind with these resources. The timing on that is, we're going to watch that because if the costs haven't been fully incurred, we don't want to put the cash there, but we'll monitor that as we get closer to the end of the fiscal year and make a recommendation to the council before the end of the fiscal year. We also have, there is potential for a shortfall in some FEMA expenditures and FEMA reimbursements that we've been made aware of that may require us to look to either this or the stabilization fund to help offset some of those costs. Back when we had COVID, we incurred a number of costs related to policing, policing areas down on Dane Street, the beaches, the recreation areas, inside shops. There were certain mandates that came from the state and from the federal government on the health requirements. People needed to be masked up, things of that nature that we incurred costs for. It was declared a disaster, so they were appropriate to incur at the time. And I'm sorry, it was declared an emergency, not a disaster, emergency, that opened up certain FEMA funds coming back to us. We incurred about $4 million related to that, and we've been reimbursed for about 2.6, somewhere in that range to date, but we still have an outstanding balance that has yet to be reimbursed. We're working with FEMA to try to identify how much of that will be coming back, but as of late, it's been difficult to get some communication with the federal agencies. So there might be some small exposure there as well. And so that's what I have in terms of this year, looking to this resource before the end of the fiscal year. We also know that this is an important resource, and we want to use it for the things that we can't get to within the operating budget. And so we've been intentional this year about restricting unnecessary spending. And this has been, over the last few months, more so recently, we have been looking to areas that tend to be a little more discretionary in nature and seeing if we can do more with less financial resources and to try to push back some additional funds into the free cash certification for next year. So as you know, there's only two ways you get more free cash, and one is to have excess revenues beyond what you budgeted for, the other is to underspend what you've budgeted to spend. Those two combined replenish free cash. So we're actively managing that, we're actively monitoring the revenue sources and streams to make sure that when it gets replenished, it's replenished to a level that is within our financial policies and targets here. And right now, we think even with everything that I just noted in terms of draws, that we're going to be right in that range that we typically are.
Thank you. I appreciate that, and it does sound like, I know, as a council, we've discussed before sort of the timing of decisions, and we have to take votes on things when they're in front of us, though we can amend what's been presented to us and can hold things in the hopes that other things come in front of us. So I'm curious about the feasibility, particularly of getting the roads and sidewalks transfer request and the fire station loan buy-down request. It sounds like there are some questions around the timing of that, but just getting those locked in either before this full amount is transferred or before this request is finalized, both in terms of feasibility and, I think, colleagues' appetite for that.
Thank you, Counselor. Are there any other questions for Mr. Ailes from the council? Mr. Perry, anything you'd like to add?
I could stay home tonight. He covers everything for me. Very quickly, along the lines of Counselor Bowen, too, we've had several meetings over the last couple of weeks, myself and Mr. Ailes. I did at the back of that memo I sent you there, try to give you some understanding of what's left over. And yeah, it is my understanding that the, hopefully, the roads and sidewalks, we've been talking about that for quite some time, and the fire station from that. I don't know if there's going to be much more. In my opinion, as your budget analyst capacity, we have to be careful to carry forward some of the fund balance to protect the balance sheet when we go in next year. And I agree with Mr. Ailes, some of the revenues coming in are stronger than we've seen in other years. I'll be giving you a third quarter budget actual in another few weeks, so I'll get a better handle on that when I do that. But bottom line to it, the other thing I'd say before I give you my recommendation, this is a stabilization fund transfer request, as you all know. I can say to you, as your budget analyst, we're getting closer to using that stabilization fund than we have in the past, and you need to kind of intellectually, I think, prepare yourselves for that, given the cost of labor, given the cost of a whole host of things, inflation, everything else, some of the stuff that's come out of Washington, D.C. There's a whole bunch of things going on. So I think, to me, it's extremely important we maintain our policies, continue these transfers. And that said, Madam President, I do recommend the adoption of the mayor's proposal.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. I know we're really close to our next one, but Counselor Hausmann, you had a question for Mr. Perry?
Yeah, my question may take a little bit of time. Do you want to open the other hearing, or do you want to go? Because it's 8 o'clock.
Well, let's hear your question, and then if we need to open it, we'll give Mr. Perry a minute to think about his.
Mr. Perry, the order 73, these two transfers, one into the OPEB fund, one into the city's stabilization fund, and then three and four, which we haven't gotten to yet, could be viewed as sort of standalone requests, maybe somewhat siloed. And I guess what I'm interested in asking you to do is to provide, sort of step back and provide a more global or holistic picture with reference to how the financial policies and objectives fit as a document, sort of provide the context for how each of these things fit together, how they are called for within the document, and how they sort of set forth the ability, because of their guidelines, to provide the stability and resilience in our budget and our budget building so that these don't look like sort of siloed requests, well, we have this one, we have this one, we have this one. But they actually are part of a more holistic picture. So I wonder if you could, in five seconds, sort of...
I can give you a Cliff Notes version, if that's all right with you, Madam President. I think it's working fantastic, in my opinion, as your budget analyst. The capital expenditure plan, we work on hard, the financial forecasting plan, we work hard, and the financial policies, which you yourself are heavily involved with, all a dovetailing together. And in my view, as your budget analyst, it's working well. We're able to handle some of these things. The thing that's making me nervous right now is labor costs, but in my opinion, as your budget analyst, holistically, using your words, I think it's working well. I'm very pleased with it, and we're able to do things in this city that very few other communities could do, given all those policy issues.
I would follow up, but I know we have another...
We'll open the next one and recess it briefly to see if we can wrap that conversation up. So let's go to, we'll pause this one, and we'll open the public hearing on order 74. Ms. Kent?
Order number 74, the City of Beverly ordered that the City Council of the City of Beverly hold a public hearing on Monday, March 17, 2025, at 8:00 PM at 191 Cabot Street, Third Floor, Council Chambers, relative to a transfer request of $800,000 to cover costs associated with the repair and replacement of the city's fuel depot on the DPW campus. And this was in the newspaper on March 7.
Thank you, Ms. Kent. I had intended a motion to recess this to 8:10. All those in favor? That carries 9-0, so we'll pick that up at 8:10, and we'll resume our public hearing on order 73. Counselor Hausmann, you had a follow-up question?
Yeah, I don't want to belabor the point, but I kind of regret sort of saying I'd have a follow-up, but we're there here, we're there now. So in terms...
Do you need Mr. Ailes's time machine?
Exactly, exactly. In terms of how these fit together, the transfer of the OPEB is within the guidelines set out in financial policies and objectives. The transfer into certified free, into the stabilization fund, also within the guidelines. The request from the administration under the next two orders for the use of free cash, the ones that Counselor Bowen referred to as well, all of those are, find a place within the financial policies and objectives, which is, purpose is to provide, as I understand it, both resiliency, flexibility, and stability to the city budget. So I guess when I look at these, what I, and your recommendation that all of these be adopted, basically, I'm on the same page as you in the sense that they, that all of these pieces are fitting together, these are not siloed, they may be one, you know, appear to be one-off, but they are not siloed requests from the administration. They fit together within a set of policies and objectives that contemplate how all these pieces fit together. And I guess that's really my point, and it's sort of, that's why I was asking you to sort of step back and sort of say, do they fit together globally from your point of view?
Absolutely, in my opinion. When I came here a little over eight years ago, we couldn't do this stuff back then. And as you know, we talked at great length, the financial policies was, if there's anything I'd like to hope before I leave here, that was a huge policy change for this city to try to fit everything in together, to lay the foundation, to do things not only back then to today, but today into the future. So it does fit very well. I'm very pleased where we're at with regard to our stabilization fund. We've had, I literally had conversations today with our finance director. Counselor Feldman made comments about the debt, the debt stabilization. We're having a dialogue. I'm not saying we're doing that, but, you know, we have a big project coming up at the city hall that may play in part of the strategy, which reduces the debt, which makes things more favorable to the taxpayers. So it fits very well. And I'll also remind you that, since I've been here, it's not me really, but it's the work of everybody that's done, we've had two bond rating increases. Let's not forget that. And part of the reasons we're having bond rating increases is just to the commentary council that you've articulated in the sense that we've got policies and we stick to them, and we're conservative in our revenue approaches. The financial forecast work that we do, I think, is outstanding, and it really helps us there. It fits together, to answer your question, and I think the city is in really good footing, as good as you're going to find anyplace else with regard to how we handle our finances. It's not an accident that we're able to do this stuff. It's actually designed, it's planned, and my compliments a lot go to our finance director for making a lot of this happen.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor St. Hilaire?
Yes, I just wanted to say in response to Counselor Hausmann, order 73, OPEB trust, stabilization trust fund transfers. I mean, to me, I recall the first term of Mayor Cahill and working with Mr. Ailes in establishing both the stabilization fund and the OPEB trust fund. So to me, these are longstanding practices representing sound financial policy. I suggest these are kind of routine, and we should continue this approach. And, you know, I think the next two, to your point, I think we should have some questions about, but this one, to me, makes a lot of sense, and I do support it likewise.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other questions for Mr. Perry from the council? Ms. Kent has the sign-up sheet. No one had signed up to speak, but are there any members of the public who did wish to speak in this public hearing? Seeing none, close this public hearing and refer it back to the Subcommittee on Finance and Property for further action this evening. And we will go to reopen our public hearing on order number 74, which was recessed from 8:00 PM. We're ready to take it now. Mr. Ailes, I want you to go ahead and get things started.
Thank you. So this is a request for a transfer related to a capital project that we simply have to undertake. As you all know, through the last, I believe, two versions of our capital expenditure plan, we've noted the deterioration of our fuel depot down at the DPS campus. That fuel depot serves all of the vehicles, virtually all of the vehicles within the city's fleet, and it needs to be replaced, the tanks and the pumps. And so we've gone out to bid, we've received quotes, and it's going to cost $800,000 to do that replacement. We do have a small balance remaining in a former capital fund. do that replacement. We do have a small balance remaining in a former capital fund. It's the last of those capital funds that we cleaned up a lot last year, but this is the last piece for $65,000. But the remaining $734,000 or $35,000 needs to come from free cash. So the actual request before you this evening is to take a total of $800,000, $734,008 from free cash, and $65,992 from this capital project fund, put them together in a new capital project fund, so that we can perform the work that's desperately needed down there at the DPS campus. Mr. Barber is here, the city assistant, assistant commissioner, assistant commissioner is its official title. I'm used to calling him the engineer, because he was for so long. But he's here to answer any specifics about the actual project, if you have any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Ailes. Are there questions from members of the council? Councilor Houseman?
Good evening, Mr. Barber.
Good evening. How are you?
Good, good. And I hope you are well as well. How much of this project is being handled in-house? How much is being handled outside? What are the sort of project management mechanisms that will be in place for this project?
Sure, yeah. We have an engineering firm, it's web engineering, who we've worked with. They provided the design. They also provided the specification package that we put out to bid. So they're one of our resources on this project. So as we move forward, submittals come in for very specific components that will be built in this project. And it'll be a combination of our engineering staff, our DPS staff, and also our, you know, on-call engineering team that will be able to help us with the review of the specifications. So web will help us, but a big part of this will be us seeing it and making sure that we're comfortable with what's being proposed.
So can you describe in a little bit more granular detail what the fuel depot is that is being repaired and replaced?
Yeah, absolutely. So to put it in a very simple sense, it kind of looks like a commercial gas station, like you would go to, very similar, where you have an awning, you have the actual dispensers, the dispensers have the pumps, there's a centralized section that actually takes, right now, currently, key cards. All of that has underground piping that goes to tanks, and those tanks sit inside a containment barrier. All of the equipment needs to be replaced. So it's everything from the awning, to the pumps, to the underground piping, and the actual tanks that hold the fuel. It's both gasoline and diesel. There are about 10,000 gallon tanks each, so the diesel and the gasoline are both about 10,000 gallon tanks, and all of that's getting replaced. And even more so, which is, and you've got to imagine that behind the scenes, there's a whole management system to this, and it's computer-based. And the problem is, on top of all of this, not only is the equipment outdoors all day, every day, getting, you know, beat on by the sun, pounded on by the wind and the rain and the snow, but the software that runs it, and the management system that runs it, and the computer system that runs it, is also antiquated. So it's really an entire revamp of the entire system, from the software all the way through the hardware that you see, and all the componentry.
So the fabrication of the materials, the software, are those being handled in-house, or through web?
No, that is...
How do these different pieces of the project fit together between the in-house resources and the outside resources?
Yeah, so again, as we manage the project, there's a contractor that bid on the job. They're being awarded the job as soon as we sign the contract. It's their responsibility to provide all of the equipment, all of the installation, all of the software and hardware associated with the computer side of things. From our perspective, we oversee it. It's in our yard. We're making sure that everything's happening appropriate with our operations, that, you know, everything's cordoned off the right way. There are going to be permits. We need to make sure that the permits are pulled, and all of the, you know, paperwork and all that side of the job is in place. But from there, it's pretty much upfront, review of the specifications, and their proposal for the exact equipment that's getting delivered, making sure we're comfortable with it, in combination, again, with our engineering firm, web that we're working with, and then just keeping an eye on it day to day. It's like when you have a contractor performing work at your house. You stick your head in every so often, you make sure things look okay. If there's things that you need to see that are tweaked, you're there to answer any of their questions. But for the most part, the work and responsibility is on the contractor. We're the owner of the project. We're there to oversee it.
Okay, thank you. That's what I was looking for. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Speng.
Thank you. And I don't know if you'll know this offhand, but how long would you expect the new fuel depot to last?
Well, the prior one, just to put it into perspective, went online in 1999. So it lasted a good 25 years. We would have the same expectation that this is a 20- to 25-year asset for us. It's fairly typical that, from time to time, upgrades or repairs are needed. We've maintained this system the entire time, and at this point, certain components are, they're beyond diminishing returns. Just to give you an example, the tanks themselves, the storage tanks themselves desperately need to be painted, but they're full of fuel. It's a really delicate and difficult, you know, correction to be made in the field. And so the experts have already advocated that that's not the best means. The best means is to replace them. It's more cost-effective to replace them, and that kind of got us into this entire project as a whole. So, you know, each component has its own, sort of part of the life cycle, but when you look at the system as a whole, it's tired, and it really does need to be replaced.
Thank you, Councilor. I'm going to pause this here. I know Councilor Bowen has a question, just to open our posted hearing for 8:15 on Order Number 72. And in a moment, I'll take a motion to recess this one. Ms. Kent?
Order Number 72, City of Beverly ordered that the City Council of the City of Beverly hold a public hearing on Monday, March 17, 2025, at 8:15 p.m. at 191 Cabot Street, Third Floor Council Chambers, relative to a transfer request of $628,693,000 from the city's certified free cash to be placed in the Beverly Public Schools operating budget. And this was in the newspaper on March 7.
Thank you, Ms. Kent. Councilors, I entertain a motion to recess this to 8:25. All those in favor? Carries nine zero, so we'll recess that one until 8:25 and pick it back up. And we'll return to our public hearing on Order 74. Councilor Bowen, you had a question?
Yes, thank you. So, again, just in trying to figure out sort of the prioritization of projects, particularly within the DPS section of our capital expenditure plan, there are a number of things that have been in that plan for five years or more. It's supposed to be a five-to-10-year outlook, and still not happened. And every year, the cost goes up a little bit, or doesn't, as an estimate. And it may say, you know, this project will be dependent on the operating budget next year, or free cash. This project, I think, first came online last year, and already is urgent. And the cost, sort of, as we know, as it gets more refined, is always refined up, as we see more things that need to be done. But I'm just wondering, with things like, when I went back to the plan to see where this fit, like, the same exact line about the salt shed, is there much further back than this project? So just, you know, if you could say a little bit more about where this fits in the overall needs at DPS, what else we might need to be prioritizing, and how we, I don't know if it's through the new asset management process or what, but how we get to a point where we're getting a little bit better at things rolling into this plan 10 or five years before they are likely to reach the end of their lifespan?
Right.
And we know they're coming a little bit further down the line.
Yeah, that's fantastic. Straight up, in a perfect world, we really desperately need a new DPS facility. The entire facility is tired. It's undersized for our operation. It's lacking in office space. It has no real viable inventory. Our motor pool, or where we service all the vehicles, incredibly tight. So, I mean, in a perfect world, we'd be talking about a new DPS facility, which is realistically where we'd be putting the new Fuel Island, and, you know, a new salt shed with a new roof. But the reality is, we're working with what we have. And so, something like the Fuel Island, it touches the entire city. When you really look at what we do as an organization and a city as a whole, our fleet is our means and mechanism to get the work done. It's how we get our children to school. It's how we get our police and fire to, you know, the emergencies. So without the fuel depot, we're really at a standstill. Are there other ways we could get fuel? There are. But I would advocate that the options aren't great, and especially when you're talking about 24/7 service and our ability to manage it in-house. We have about 250 fleet vehicles and 100 pieces of equipment that go to this Fuel Island. And if you look at what it would take to get all those, you know, pieces of equipment and fuel to other locations, not to mention, we might not have access to 24/7 fuel, that becomes problematic. So even though something like the salt shed roof agreed is very important, this is a priority from the standpoint that it really does put the rest of the city in motion, and that's why this is such a critical resource for us. In terms of your question about the asset management, that's where we're trending. Almost everything that we're looking at right now, we are chasing condition, ranking, ratings, you know, whether, and criticality comes down to risk and risk analysis, and all that gets wrapped up with the cost to replace it in the end of life and its life cycle. And as we trend through all of these studies that we're doing, our marching orders to our consultants are to take that asset management approach and deliver us the information. In our reports, consistent with how that asset management program's going to run, the back of that is, we turn it around into reports that we can put at your fingertips. So even though we're not there yet, that is absolutely the direction that we're trending, and all of these things that we're talking about are going to start to show up in that plan. And it's subtle, and it's subliminal, and it's not quite there yet. But you'll notice a lot of the reporting that we've been bringing to you has asset-tracking IDs already appended to it. We're starting the culture, we're talking the language, we're building the framework, we're building the infrastructure to support the asset management plan. And even though we're not delivering you the product entirely right now, all that foundation and base work is being laid, so that the future generations of us and future generations of the city can use that framework and continue to build upon it. So it's coming, it's in the progress, but very preliminary stages. We're building it from scratch, and we're the pioneers who are doing it.
Thank you, Councilor. Are there other questions? Councilor Sweetie?
Thank you, Madam President. Just a quick comment. I'd like to echo the point that Councilor Bowen made. I certainly understand the importance of this project and plan to vote in favor of the proposal for that reason. But the point she made is one that should be reemphasized, which is the need for a capital plan that more clearly prioritizes upcoming projects over a multi-year period, so that the council can better understand the ranking of need and the available funding for the multitude of projects. This clearly is an important proposal, but to her point, it's one that wasn't otherwise clearly identified as far in advance, as I would have thought it would have been, given that we're now in a position that it desperately needs to be replaced. So I just wanted to make that comment in terms of how we should be framing our capital plan going forward.
Yeah, makes perfect sense.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor St. Hilaire?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Barber. You referenced other options that weren't attractive. Just out of curiosity, since you raised it, what are the other options?
Just, for example, a 24-hour commercial, you know, location where we could fuel up that has the size for the logistics of the types of vehicles that we have, right? So first off, what are the motions and the movements of our vehicles and the sizes? The only real logical place that we could potentially get to would be on 128. There's a service facility right on 128. But the problem there is, now you're going onto the highway. So we'd have to be bringing loaders, we'd have to be bringing backhoes. We, again, if you get into all of the equipment, you know, that's the type of stuff we'd be bringing over there. Not to mention, now we're on a highway, there's only one direction that you have to exit off. So for, you know, emergency personnel, and, you know, our, you know, whether it's, and even all the way through the school buses, it's, it's not convenient. And I don't want to make it sound like we're only doing this out of convenience. It truly has operational impacts, our ability to fuel efficiently and effectively and at the time of need. So first off, is it a 24-hour, you know, facility that we can access? And does it have the appropriate size for the movements and the type of equipment we would be bringing there? So just to give you an example.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Any other questions from the council? Mr. Perry, was there anything you wanted to add on this one?
Thank you, Madam President. Very briefly, I wrote to you there last week, this is, I understand your prioritization, some of the councilors, we can talk about that some more. But it's certainly, in fairness, is part of the capital improvement plan. This is not a surprise. We knew we had to do this at some point, come forward. It certainly, it sounds like it just percolated quicker than we had hoped for. And that said, in some of my previous discussions of the free cash position, everything else, it fits there. I'm comfortable with it, and I recommend the adoption of the mayor's proposal.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. And Mr. Barber, I'm remiss in not thanking you. Before you step away from the podium, thank you as well. Ms. Kent has the sign-up sheet. There were no members of the public signed up to speak, but were there members of the public who wished to speak in this public hearing? Seeing none, I'll close this public hearing and refer it back to the Committee on Finance and Property for further action this evening. And that brings us to 8:25, when we will resume our public hearing on Order 72. It was recessed to this time, so we'll pick that back up now. Ms. Kent has already read the order. Mr. Ailes, do you want to get us started on this one as well?
Be happy to. Thank you.
Thank you.
So the order you have before you this evening is a request to transfer $628,693 from the city's reserve for free cash to the school operating budget, to cover costs associated with the strike that occurred last fall. As you know, when we built the budget in July, or in June, and you all voted a budget in appropriation to the schools that didn't anticipate these costs being incurred. So as a result, we're looking to transfer these funds over, so that we can absorb the costs within the operating budget and still allow for the schools to continue to operate as they originally intended, without drawing on any other resources to cover these costs. Mr. Perry wrote a memo to you all outlining the specifics of the various types of costs that are contained within this order. He's here, I'm here. Dr. Chirocek and Emma Puglisi are here. If you have any specific questions about that, we're happy to answer them all. As well, the mayor is here as well.
Thank you, Mr. Ailes. Councilors, let's go to questions. Councilor Bowen?
Thank you. I know we got a memo with a detailed breakdown of the total amount, but I don't think that was in a public document. So would love to just have that sort of run through line by line. And in particular, the one that I just had trouble getting a back-of-the-envelope estimate to make sense is the police detail line. I was looking at the hourly rate for details, when it's doubled or not, when it's at a four-hour minimum or not, and just how many people, for how many hours, for how many days, could make that number. So if you could just do that, that breakdown with specificity for the police detail line, and then just the highlights of the other lines, that would be really helpful.
Sure. Let me start with the summary level and the groupings of the costs. Police details, $214,960. Legal costs for strike-related activities, $82,317. Student meal costs, the days school were not open, $12,023. Weekend and holiday custodial overtime during negotiations, $4,455. Non-school day locked-out labor costs, $165,850. Increased parental leave costs, which was part of the final negotiated agreement, $48,871. Creating a total, subtotal of strike costs of $528,476. In addition to that, there'll be costs associated with the overtime for the Saturday makeup days that will incur another $100,000, $100, $100, $217. Let me say that again, $100,217 for the total of the requested amount of $628,693. As for the police details, as many of you know, anytime there was a significant gathering or a place negotiations were going on, police details were required. And the rates at which those were paid are contractually outlined within the police collective bargaining agreement. So it was a premium rate related to strike activity that they did receive.
Councilor Bowen?
Thank you. And just in terms of the number of details and the burden on our police department and/or budget from that, I think I'm still having a hard time getting to that number, because I think our total revenue figure expected from all details year-round, paid by other sources like National Grid and others, is $180,000. Last year, in a very heavy work zone, it was $260,000. So just in terms of the, how we get to that number, if you have, like, the number shifts.
Yeah, you might be confusing a couple of different things. So the... So the $180,000 revenue line within the general fund budget is the administrative fee component when private entities hire a detail. There's a percentage that comes back to the general fund. In terms of overall details in a given year, we probably spend about $3 million in details for private and departments within city government. So in that sense, it's more of a reasonable amount. I mean, in a typical year, I would say DPS between the water work they do, the sewer work, and some of the road paving, they're probably $500,000 in detail easy that they incur. And that's for city-run projects. In addition to that, you've got probably about $2.5 million in N-Grid and the gas main work that gets done on a regular basis and things of that nature, the music theater, things like that. I can get you a much more comprehensive breakdown of the types of details work that we do in the city, if you'd like.
Yes, thank you, because it's not that clear in the operating budget where that goes in and out. So that would be helpful in general. And then I think for this specific request, is just thinking about sort of how the decision-making was made around when details were needed or not. If we're talking about like half the cost of all the DPS details for the year, does this include details for earlier parts of the negotiation or just for the strike time?
This is just strike-related details.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor St. Hilaire?
Thank you, Madam President. Just curious, Mr. Ailes, I don't see public relations costs associated with this. And I'm just sort of curious if there were any public relations costs associated with the strike and if there are any other costs that were covered somewhere else in the budget.
Yeah, public relation costs, yes, there were public relation-related costs that were absorbed within other areas of the budget. They were effectively covered through some undrages in ARPA contracts that allowed us to reappropriate some ARPA funds, as you may recall, through other conversations we've had. ARPA had a sunset of December 31, 2024. So any unspent funds at that point in time would have gone back and then returned to the federal government. So it was actually an appropriate mechanism to absorb some of the undrages in some of the other obligations within ARPA so that those funds were fully utilized and didn't go back to the federal government.
What was the total cost?
It was about, I think it was about $130,000, $140,000 maybe.
Okay, and any other costs like that that might have been funded somewhere else?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, what about, I'm sorry, Madam President. Union fines, what is the status of those? Who's paying and what was the final amount?
So that is an amount that was levied to the Teachers Association by SERB, the governing body. And so we are really not a party to that agreement, arrangement, those fines, anything of that nature. As far as where it stands, I don't have an idea of how that's been.
Looks like Dr. Cherochak might be willing to jump in on this one. Dr. Cherochak, thank you.
I don't have a lot more information, but I can tell you that the total of the amount of fines levied against the BTA was $810,000.
$810?
$810,000. And the SERB has been, you know, they are back and forth with the SERB about how and when. And I believe, and I don't want to say out of court, but I believe that there's a request for a payment plan over a certain number of years for them.
Okay, in, I'm sorry, thank you. Mr. Ailes, I guess on the ARPA funds, is there any ability to use any other funding for any of this, or does this all have to be free cash?
Yeah, ARPA has been fully obligated. It's closed out in contracts at this point. So the answer for those resources is no. Obviously, you know, we look to the different resources we have at any given point in time when a need arises. We felt in this case, given where the operating budget stands today and the reserves that still need to fund some collective bargaining agreements related to fire, that the free cash was the most appropriate place to look to fund these costs.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Sweeney?
Thank you, Madam President. Counselor St. Hilaire asked my question about the public relations firm's expenses, so I appreciate you bringing that up, Counselor. I did want to follow up on the point about the $810,000 fine that the SERB had issued. And Dr. Cherochak, you may be best positioned to answer this so that I best understand. Has the city put a request in for some amount of funding based on these expenses that would come from that fine? And it's a decision of the SERB to determine if any money makes its way back to the city? Or is there really no scenario where any amount of this fine could come back to the city to pay for the expenses that we've incurred?
So I don't want to speak out of turn, I'm not sure. I believe there was a request that the money, that some of the money be funneled to the Beverly bootstraps. But I don't, I don't know any further than that. So that would require more information than I have for you tonight.
Okay, so you don't know if there is even a mechanism for the city to recoup some of the money?
No, I don't know.
Okay, I'd certainly open that question up to either the mayor, Mr. Ailes, or anybody who might know. The legal costs, is that the entirety that the city spent on outside counsel throughout the negotiations? Or are those costs specific to that two-week or so period during the strike?
Specific to that two-week period of time.
Do you know the total amount that was spent on outside legal counsel during the entirety of the negotiations?
I want to ask Emma Puglisi to join me. So, and I would just say that, you know, our legal fees aren't broken down by negotiation-specific. At least, I don't have them broken down that way because they, our labor attorneys do a lot more than just the negotiations for this particular unit, so.
Yes, so we have spent to date on our comprehensive labor counsel, excluding that 21-day period while we were on strike, roughly about $40,000. So inclusive of all sorts of reasons that we would need labor counsel, including bargaining with these two units as well as bargaining with other units as well that were under negotiation this year.
Okay, so it sounds like with that information, this is, well, not the entirety of the cost, the bulk of the costs tied to outside counsel for these negotiations?
Yes, for labor counsel, yes.
Okay.
Yes, limited to those 21 days.
Okay, I appreciate that information. I do have a question, if you could clarify, for the increased parental leave cost. Initially, I thought that was essentially retroactive payment to a benefit that was agreed upon. But in my conversation with Mr. Perry, it sounded like that might be something different. Could you elaborate on what the $48,000 or so for increased parental leave costs were?
Yeah, that was the, so the contract was settled on November 26. There were some costs occurred between September 1 and November 26.
Okay, that's what I figured they were then. All right, thank you for clarifying that. The last question that I have is for the overtime for Saturday makeup days. Is this for employees other than the teachers? And I ask because my assumption is that the teachers are exempt.
It is for employees other than the teachers.
Okay.
You know, not the units that were on strike, correct. It's for custodial and food service and transportation and clerical.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. I did actually remember one last question. Is there a contingency fund or some amount of funding within the school budget that is going toward costs related to the negotiations aside from the proposal for the transfer that's before us tonight?
I'm going to let Emma say that, but no, I don't think so.
No, so there was no set aside for additional costs relative to the strike. So all of the set aside that was sort of held in reserve in our budget for negotiations was designated to go towards benefits and compensation for the bargaining units.
Okay, so to reword that, I think the answer you're telling me is there was no contingency funding within the school budget already for unforeseen circumstances, something like this, that could be utilized?
Correct.
Okay.
Right, and so reasonable negotiation costs relative to legal, right, which are absorbed for labor, legal counsel costs were absorbed within there, just not these 21 days of sort of marathon days of legal counsel and additional counsel being brought in because counsel needs to be in multiple places at one time.
Okay, thank you for that answer. And I'm willing to vote in favor of the transfers because we need to pay our bills. But I would like, Mr. Perry, whether it's you or otherwise, some clarification about if the city has an ability to recoup some funding from the fine that was levied to hopefully help offset the costs that are before us tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Spang?
Thank you. I'm not sure who would best answer the question, but when we've had other departments come for similar requests for transfers at the end of the bargaining cycle, they will attach the new CBA agreement and ask for a sum of funds. Is that a step that's going to come later for this? Or do you anticipate this is the one request?
Mr. Ailes, thank you.
So the funding associated with the collective bargaining agreement was appropriated at the beginning of the fiscal year when we set the budget. We had basically a budget that was allotted to handle the negotiations for this year. So when another department comes, we haven't yet funded those increases. So there's usually a transfer in to cover the payroll costs associated with that.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Bowen?
Thank you. I had a similar question, maybe just from a slightly different angle, in that because there was a reserve for negotiations in the school budget, much like there is a reserve for negotiations in the general fund for other departments, it was my expectation that sort of the full costs of the negotiations and the settled contract would come from that. If the total amount was less than that, then there would be, you know, sort of money left over at the end of the year that had been in a reserve and then wasn't allocated to a specific cost. If the overall cost of the contract was more than what had been appropriated, that a request would come to us with a contract, as we see with other departments, and a request to transfer, often that's from the reserve for negotiations to the department. In this case, it would be sort of to the school department from another source. So it seems like the increased parental leave costs are one element of the settled contract that exceeded that amount. And I think it's sort of a mix of Counselor Sweeney's questions and Counselor Spang's question. The 4.9-plus million in the reserve for negotiation at the beginning of this year, I think, has been allocated fully. And it's not clear to me exactly, and I know I don't watch every single school committee meeting, so it may have been explained, you can point me to which recording to watch if so. But sort of how that has been allocated from the reserve for negotiations to other places now, back pay, additional salaries for the remainder of this year, costs associated with negotiations, anything else.
So I think that Mr. Ailes somewhat answered this earlier. The money that was in reserve for negotiations has covered the costs of the increases that are, we had allocated those in the original budget. So, and perhaps your question about parental leave, that was included in is that was one of the unexpected things that came at the very end. So, does that answer your question?
Counselor Bowen?
Thank you. I guess partially, and, you know, we'll see in the fiscal year '26 budget presentation where those additional funds show up, department by department, sort of line by line.
So they were part of the original budget that was approved in the regular budget process. Those reserve for negotiation funds were in the FY '25 budget as it was approved by the committee in June at the city council meeting.
Yes, as a single line item, right?
Probably, yeah, except for that, you could see, I guess you could look if you wanted in the, we do transfers, and so I think Ms. Visnick would know, we transfer those funds over the course of the year. So those transfers have been made throughout the year. And so those would be available to see at the FNF meetings that we have that are recorded and are online, that's where they do, that's where we do them. So we go through a process where the money was transferred out of reserve for negotiations into various salary lines by building, you know, spread out over the eight buildings and the different cost centers.
Got it. Okay, so that would be a helpful thing to see, that that full amount has been transferred since November.
And all those transfers have been done through FNF, yep.
And then the remainder is really the $48,000.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor St. Hilaire?
This may be for Mr. Ailes or even maybe the mayor. I'm just curious if any other cost control measures were considered other than just a free cash transfer?
Mr. Ailes, thank you.
Just to clarify the question, you said cost control measures?
Yeah, I guess in looking to pay for this, right, you're suggesting a free cash transfer. Could we have implemented anything else? Salary freeze, hiring freeze, layoffs, anything else we looked at to come up with this money? Shifts in other priorities?
I think it's the goal of the administration and the school committee to try to resolve this with minimal impact to operations, right? So anytime you're talking those types of alternatives, it's got an impact to operations, right?
This doesn't have to just come from the school side, it could also come from the city side, correct?
It could. I think, you know, earlier tonight, we talked about our initiatives and desire to force back some underutilized discretionary spending to try to get that money into free cash, to certify a level that we can continually rely on year after year for capital needs, roads and sidewalks. I mean, we talked about this tonight. So they don't necessarily align. I mean, if we were to look to those for something like this, then we don't have it for the other things we talked about tonight. So it's a zero-sum game. We think right now that this is the simplest way to fund the costs that have already been incurred in a way that doesn't impact operations, both on the city side and the school side.
I guess my response to that would be, you know, we built the budget on a certain set of expectations. Obviously, this is something that was unforeseen at the time. Doesn't that change a shift in priorities and shift in what we plan to do? Or are we just always going to say that there's more money, let's just take it? I guess that's a philosophical question that we can debate, but just thinking about this, I don't love the $130,000 for PR costs that were taken out of the ARPA money. And just wondering if there's anything else we could be doing than hitting that. You know, we've all talked about, there's other things we'd love to do with all this money, right?
Mr. Mayor, are you contemplating coming to the microphone?
Contemplating coming to the microphone, yes. Thanks, Madam President. I think to Counselor St. Hilaire, to your kind of broadly stated question, the schools, as you heard, had budgeted for the offer that was made and the contract that was finally settled. So the year-one costs of funding the contract were there. What wasn't in their budget, as we've said, is how to pay for costs that were incurred and generated as a result of the strike. And to your question of whether we looked to the schools to then make layoffs or to the city to then make layoffs, no, we did not think that that was the right way to go. And as Mr. Ailes said, we have been working since the turn of the new year to try to turn back any dollar that we don't have to spend between beginning of January and June 30 as a way of helping to replenish this resource, right, our reserves, because we recognize that needing to go to it for this, needing to go to it for the fuel depot and such, means that we really have to work at trying to replenish it to a level that we'll all be comfortable with. So, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counselor Sweeney?
Thank you, Madam President. To the line of questioning that Counselor St. Hilaire raised and the response from the mayor, I think this, given the circumstance, free cash makes sense as the right source of funding to cover these bills which we've already incurred. I will state that it is very unfortunate that over $200,000 is going to be spent from free cash or $140,000. free cash, or $140,000 from ARPA for the PR expenses, and then another $80,000 for outside legal counsel. I wish there had been more thoughtfulness about the long-term financial impact. That's a significant amount of funding for the city to spend, particularly on the public relations firm, and that's funding that, you know, as Counselor Bowen mentioned in a previous public hearing, could have otherwise been allocated toward roads and sidewalks and some of the other priorities that we look to utilize free cash or other one-time sources of funding for. So at this point, because the bills have been incurred, I'm willing to appropriate free cash. I think that's a preferred alternative than making any sort of service reductions on the operating budget would be, but it's certainly disappointing the amount of funding that were spent on those two service areas in particular. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Bowen.
Thank you. I know sometimes when we get these requests, other than the requests to transfer funds after the conclusion of negotiations to fully fund a contract that's been settled, other times we'll get requests for transfers in order to enter into a contract for services. That sort of, the money has to be there before the contract can be signed. So just, you know, for the legal costs, even for the police details where that's sort of an internal contract between a department and our police department, as those decisions were being made, was there a view towards where that funding had been previously allocated or could be available? And I'm thinking of, you know, in the first or second week of November, I was sending questions, saying, what are the anticipated costs of some of these items, and will they fit in the existing budget for legal in the school department's administrative budget or the city's legal services department? Will they be from the reserve for negotiations? And was told it wasn't really the council's place to ask at that time. This is the time to ask that. So any further clarity on how those decisions were being made about the potential budget impacts of entering into certain plans, like how many officers to have out and how many places, how to use the legal services available? And I know a lot of those decisions were being made in a really stressful time and on short turnaround, so they're not things that can always be as fully publicly debated in the moment, but just reflecting on where that then leaves us, it'd be helpful to know.
So, in relationship to the police details, it's my understanding that those are contractual. So if in fact there's a protest, if in fact there's a gathering, if in fact there's a need for a police detail because of that, it's not a debatable amount. We don't get to say, we only want them at the North Beverly School but not at Ayers, or, you know, it wasn't a choice. Those are contractually required. If it's in the police contract, that if there is a protest, if there is something going on, then we must dispatch police detail to those areas, and the cost and the rate is already set. So that wasn't a choice. We didn't choose to have those police details, they were pretty much required to be there. And in terms of the legal fees as we went along, you know, I mean, I guess I might point out that there was another side that had sufficient support and services, and we were in the midst of trying to make sure that we were working through a contract negotiation and that we were following the law and that we were doing the things that we needed to do so that the city and the city's sustainable, a sustainable contract was being met and that we were, you know, being careful of what we did. So we did monitor the costs as we went along. However, I would say that, you know, those costs were unavoidable. I mean, you have to have your attorney in the room the whole time that you're doing the negotiations. I don't know if you're aware, I ran for 19 hours a day for 21 straight days. So we had folks that were in a room negotiating a contract for 19 straight days with legal counsel in the room. We had no choice. So, you know, I don't think there were choices that we made. I think we were responding to a situation to make sure that we were making the right choices and making sure that we were negotiating a contract that the city could live with and that would be effective, so.
Thank you, Dr. Turocek. Counselors, are there other questions? Mr. Perry. There's no one signed up. Counselor St. Hilaire.
Just a quick one on the timeline and need for urgency on this. Is there any?
We have sort of funded through unexpended money in the short term for cash flow, all of the obligations absent the police details. I do know that the police department is anxiously awaiting those funds so that they can do what they need to do with them. So yes. We are hopeful to be able to sort of close that out and make sure that all of that is in place.
Thank you, Counselor.
Do you mind if I just take one moment and introduce you all to Emma Puglisi, who is our new Director of Finance? I said, is this your first time here? And she said, yes, it is. So I would like to formally introduce you to Emma Puglisi. She has been with us since-
June?
Yep, and so, and we are very grateful to have her. So a formal introduction to all of you for that. I just neglected to do that early on, so I wanted to take you up to me.
Thank you, and welcome, Ms. Puglisi. Thanks for being here. So, Mr. Perry, I will have you wait for one second because I started to say, no one has signed up, but I will ask, is there anyone who would like to speak in this public hearing? If you would come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, please, and then you, Vice President Crowley, are you ready to keep time? You have up to three minutes to address the council. Vice President Crowley will keep time. If you hear the timer, if you would draw your remarks to a close.
I want to wear the hat while I get timed.
You'll have to talk about that later with Vice President Crowley.
Here we go. My name is Lorinda Visnick. I live at 39 Middlebury Lane, and I'm here this evening speaking on my own behalf, not as my role as the school committee vice president, nor the school committee chair of finance and facilities, nor my school committee role as the chair of the policy department. Hindsight is 2020. I too wish the strike had never taken place, mostly because it is, it was, and continues to be incredibly divisive to our community. Our community has been torn apart in ways that I'm not sure will heal anytime soon, if ever. I too wish we could have not spent any money on a PR firm. Counselor St. Hilaire, I wish we didn't have to pay for police details. I think you would agree, if there were hundreds of people outside of a door and they were unhappy with you and they had been dehumanizing you on social media, you too might be a little worried about walking to your car in the dark, especially if you were a female. As a part-time school committee member, I am not a public relation expert. I'm not a communications expert. I chose to not take my position on any part of the strike to social media. Other people made other choices. I am well aware that many people did not appreciate the updates that came from the schools through, at least in part, in conjunction with the communications team, the bill that you're looking at, or the bill that was paid by ARPA. However, every day that ends in the letter Y, I will stand by my own decision and the committee's decision to not partake in the social media frenzy that has torn this community apart and from which I hope we can recover, and I hope we call on each other to recover from by being kind to one another instead of dehumanizing people. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Visnick. Were there any other members of the public who wish to speak in this public hearing? Mr. Perry, I'll invite you to come on up and add anything that you'd like.
Thank you, Madam President. Maybe I could start on a little lighter note. Second page of my report has a typo there. I said 623,693, it should be 628, so my apologies to you all.
It looks like you too would like, Mr. Ailes, the time machine.
Yes, yes, yes. We've incurred a liability here, folks. We have to pay this. If we do not pay this, it'll be a liability to be on the books on June 30th. It will reduce our free cash, and then for the tax rate come next November, December, we're going to have to pay for it anyways. So from an accounting perspective, it is in the city's taxpayers' best interest that we pay this bill, and certainly that you've got my recommendation, I'll hold that for the end. So it's important we pay this bill. As your budget analyst, I monitor all the departments, I keep an eye, and I do want to commend Emma. I've gotten to know her a little bit. She's doing a great job down there. She's been very helpful to me and takes my calls. I monitor the school budget as well as everything else. One of the concerns I had and one of the questions I've discussed with the finance director was the fact that, why shouldn't the school department pay for this out of their budget, right? And the fact that matters, if we did that, it's going to put so much stress and strain on that school budget that it will have a detrimental impact on the current fiscal year, and quite frankly, because the way they have to, and it gets complicated with revolving funds and things of that nature, we'd be drawing down the accounts in such a way it would have a detrimental impact on the budget next year as well. So I, as your budget analyst, would agree with the administration. I don't think it's a wise decision to take it from the school budget or anywhere else. I think free cash is the right approach. As I wrote to you on the free cash usage, it's my opinion, as your budget analyst, this conforms with our financial policies. It's a one-time expenditure. It's my understanding from Mr. Ailes, this is it, if we pay this. Hopefully, there's nothing else left, and I'm sure, I'm hopeful that that won't occur, but it does meet our financial policies in my view as a one-time expenditure. I think the utilization of free cash is the right approach, given the circumstances that are facing us. I looked also, could the police department cover this? It's a municipal expenditure. This wasn't some private detail. We had to protect the public safety, and the police department also doesn't have the capacity to cover this. As a matter of fact, I'm a little concerned with the overtime. As we, as you all know by now, we get into that stuff around this time of the year. I'll be looking at that in a few weeks, but unfortunately, the police department can't cover this either, and as such, it does require a free cash transfer. I am, I want to thank the school folks who are here tonight. They've been helpful to me over the years, and I know some of you have talked to me, and I've thought this myself. I will respectfully request of our school friends here, and I can do this through Emma or whoever the superintendent's comfortable with, I think we should explore the opportunity whether these fines, I don't know where they're at, I'm not here to pass any judgment in any way, shape, or form, but if the fines are going to be paid, I would ask our school folks to share with us, are there opportunities for some of these fines to come back to the city to help the taxpayers? I think that's a legitimate question to ask. I don't know those answers. In my own experience, and other communities have been through this, I'm not aware of any other community where the fines came back to the community to help offset strike-related costs, but I think it's fair, we should explore that. That's all I'm asking. I don't know if there is an opportunity there, but I do ask, and maybe Emma and I can connect in a few weeks, and maybe we could check into that and get back to you with some answers on that as well. Bottom line, Madam President, one of the things that Council Houseman raised there, we kind of got in an esoteric conversation about financial policies and long-range financial planning and things of that nature. The city has been smart. This was something nobody wanted. It's very emotional, you know, and I can only imagine what some of the people, some of whom in this room tonight, went through in this stuff. But because we've been smart, because we did financial policies, because we do long-range financial planning and financial forecasting, and because we do a host of other things that I'm very proud that this city does, we're able to pay these bills in an unfortunate circumstance. And even though it's been a difficult situation, I think the city should be proud of itself, everybody, that at least we have the financial wherewithal to handle this, and we're able to do this through the free cash. That said, Madam President, as I wrote to you all, it is my recommendation to transfer the free cash funds to pay these bills. I would suggest you adopt the mayor's proposal.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. I will close this public hearing and refer it back to Subcommittee on Finance and Property for further action this evening. Thank you, Mr. Ailes, for walking us to all four public hearings. Thanks for being here. Thanks, Dr. Turocek and Ms. Puglisi, for being here for this last one. Mr. Barber, thank you for being here for the third one. And Mr. Perry, thanks for your work with us as well. We'll be taking further action on these, all four, later this evening. Counselors, we can go now to acceptance of minutes of previous meetings. We have three sets of meeting minutes that we can accept. We have a set from Public Service Committee meeting on February 24, 2025, a set of minutes from our regular City Council meeting, March 3, 2025, and minutes from our Legal Affairs Committee meeting, March 10, 2025. Is there a motion to approve these three sets of minutes? All those in favor? Carrie's 9-0, and those are approved. Thank you. Ms. Kemp, let's go to Communications from his honor, the mayor, please.
Order number 78, a $13,000 grant from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, MED Project Drug Stewardship Program to be utilized for cost of management and disposal of medication in the medication collection receptacle at the police station.
Please refer that to the Committee on Finance and Property.
Order number 79, an appointment for Zach Servito of 107 Essex Street to serve on the Economic and Community Development Council.
Please refer that to the Committee on Legal Affairs. We have, and Mr. Ailes, I don't know if you'd like to say a little bit, just to help us understand what's coming to us, but we have two, or, Mr. Mayor, you'd like to. We have two late files from the mayor's office that are coming to counselors now, and they are two documents that look very similar, except one requests the possibility of a special meeting, and one requests the possibility of saying a public hearing. They're both to set a public hearing, one for a special meeting on March 31st, that's one option, or April 7th. And, Mr. Mayor, I guess I'll let you say a little bit more about why the two and what and what.
Sure. Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, everybody, for considering this. Council President and I recently spoke about us looking to come forward, let everybody get a look first. Everybody, we'd spoken about, and I think we also previewed for you in our last project update in February, that we were planning to come forward soon with the request for full project funding for the water meter replacement project, a project that we've talked about for some time. Now, initially, when the Council President and I were talking, we were looking to file at the April 7 meeting for a public hearing at the meeting after that. However, Mr. Barber came to me this morning and flagged something that had been brought to his attention Friday by the city's consultant on the water meter replacement project, and that was, the consultant flagged to him, we're worried about tariffs hitting, you know, certain components of that project, very specifically the water meters themselves as equipment, and he was, the consultant was holding out the idea that if we acted with some urgency, we might beat the tariffs. Now, I asked Mr. Barber today to try to really dig into that with the consultant and the sales folks and figure out, is that real? We weren't able to get full clarity on that by the end of the business day today, so we're coming to you with two requests, okay? And the first request is for a special meeting on March 31st, at which we would ask you to hold a public hearing on the request for project funding. We will figure that out. If you go along with this, we'll figure out in the next couple of business days, is there something to doing this March 31st versus April 7th versus April 22nd that will help us to avoid an increase in cost due to tariffs? We couldn't get that answer with clarity by tonight, thus we're asking you, you know, to move forward as if it is urgent, and we'll figure it out as quickly as we can with help from our external partners. So we're asking you to schedule a special meeting for March 31st and schedule a public hearing on this request at that meeting. We're similarly in another ask, asking you to schedule a public hearing for this at your next regularly scheduled meeting on April 7th. Obviously, only one would need to take place, and we'll try to get that sorted, as I said, in the next couple of business days definitively, and then we'll communicate back to you and communicate to the city clerk in time for her to advertise it, if in fact we need to do it on the 31st. So I hope that's clearer than mud, and we've got subject matter experts here. I just wanted to try to get it in layman's terms for everybody, and me as well. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And so for now, these are just pertaining to setting of public hearings. And so for now, these are just pertaining to setting of public hearings. So we'll start, though, by determining if we're accepting late files. So they'll be numbered, orders 104 and 105 respectively, if accepted. And so order 104, if accepted, would be the one that says, the difference in them is in that last paragraph, scheduling a special meeting Monday, March 31st. This will be ordered as order 104 if accepted. So I'd entertain a motion to accept a late file from his honor, the mayor.
Second.
Any further discussion? Councillor Swinney.
I just have one quick question, Madam President. And certainly, if there is a public hearing scheduled, we can dive into greater detail then. But just so I understand, is this a matter of just procuring all the meters and then otherwise a project would take place as originally scheduled? I wanna make sure we're not expediting a project to the point that the end product, the installation of these meters isn't as thoroughly planned out as it could be just to try to beat an economic concern with the tariffs.
So a couple things. As I said, the project was just about ready to bring to you folks. You know, we're trying to speed it up by a few weeks. It appears that about half of the necessary meters for our purchase, about 6,000 of them are in stock. So we could, you know, we could have them sent our way. It's the roughly another 6,500 or so of them that we're concerned with, need to be ordered overseas. And that's where we're trying to, you know, beat the clock to the potential savings or avoided costs of around $325,000 to $350,000. But do you wanna say something about the readiness of the project overall?
There's a number of different components that go to this. The purchase of the meter is one, one single component. So that's really what we're talking about here. And it's not the entire cost of an entire meter. There's certain parts of the meter that might be subject to the tariffs. For example, electronics and batteries and some, like, gasket materials and things like that that come from outside of the country. The meters are ultimately assembled in the United States, and then, you know, they would be potentially stored in a warehouse. So a lot of these meters do already exist on the shelf. So what we're trying to do is get as many as we can into our possession before, you know, the rest of the order is placed and before meters have to start then being fabricated from materials that are, you know, sourced from areas that are subject to the tariffs. So that's kind of the idea on the purchase of the equipment side. And then beyond that, the other components that you're going to be voting on include installation services and then some support that we have to echo back to earlier comments about project management. We have built-in project management costs for consultants that are gonna help us manage this. You have to imagine with, you know, over 12,000 accounts, we have to get into each one of the properties and all the logistics associated with that. And we have, you know, consultants that are gonna help us with all that work too, so we're carrying those costs. There's some software that we want to deploy throughout this to give our users and end users a better experience. We're carrying some of that cost. So all things considered, we do have a full breakdown and proposed costs associated with almost all aspects of the project at this point, some of which has been formally bid through bidding process. And we've received all the, all those bids and have them on file. And that's what we're gonna be coming to you with a more formal breakdown of what we're really looking for. But in the short term, it's mitigating the exposure, really, to the tariffs and a potential cost increase of between somewhere in the realm of $300,000 and $350,000. So that's what we're really coming to you today for.
Thank you, Mr. Barber.
That's it. Thank you both for that explanation, I appreciate it.
Thank you. And everyone who I just saw you all writing dutifully down 104 and 105, Ms. Kent, just let me know, it'll be 105 and 106. So thank you for that. So we have a motion, a second, to accept late file, to be potentially numbered 105. This is for the Monday, March 31st. All those in favor, accepting the late file? Okay, thank you. And so now, now accepted, we'll refer this to the Committee on Finance and Property to set that public hearing. I would entertain a motion then to accept the other late file, which would be numbered 106 if accepted. This is the one for April 7th. All those in favor?
Aye.
That carries nine zero, and now accepted, we will also refer that to the Committee on Finance and Property to set that public hearing. Thank you very much. Ms. Kent, let's go to Communications from other city officers and boards, please. Thank you for your reminder. Councillors, order number 80 is being withdrawn per the direction of the Solicitor's Office, so Ms. Kent will go forward from order 81.
Order number 81 through 100 from the city clerk for renewal of flammable storage licenses for all the flammable permits in the city.
Thank you. So we'll refer that batch of orders to Legal Affairs.
Order 101 and 102 from the city clerk, a renewal of secondhand junk dealer license for the two on the agenda for Beverly.
Please refer those to the Committee on Legal Affairs as well.
Order number 103 from President Flowers, a recommendation for the city clerk's salary for FY '26.
Please refer that to the Committee on Finance and Property. Let's go to Communications, Applications, and Petitions, please.
Order number 104, notice of availability from Phase 4 of Status Report, former Varian facility site, 150 Sawyer Road.
Councillors, I would entertain a motion to receive this and place it on file. All those in favor?
Aye.
That carries nine zero. Thank you very much. Let's pause now, we'll do a break for some Subcommittee work. I would entertain a motion to take a break of about 15 to 20 minutes for Subcommittee business. All those in favor?
Aye.
That carries nine zero. We'll have Finance and Property stay here in Council chambers, Legal Affairs in the committee room, Public Services in the hall, please. Thank you very much.
...associated with the repair of the city's fuel depot at the DPW campus. Appreciate the questions being answered tonight. Any other further comments or questions? All those in favor? I'm sorry, a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that is approved, three zero. Order seventy-two, this was the transfer request to cover costs associated with the Beverly Public School strike, six hundred and twenty-eight thousand, six hundred and ninety-three dollars from Certified Free Cash. Questions or comments? All in favor? I'm sorry, entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, report out to committee. So now we have orders one oh five and one oh six. One oh five, this is the late file tonight, the loan authorization to set a public, uh, public meeting, a special meeting, is that something we need to take up in committee? Or has that come out of?
We, we don't, for, to set the special meeting, Ms. Kent can just post it as she would a regular meeting, so we really just need to make sure that we set the public hearing.
For, for order one oh six?
And for one oh, we should set a public hearing for March thirty-first as well. And that way, if we do go forward with the special meeting, she can publicize either, we'll have voted to set.
Ms. Kent, do we have times for these?
Yeah. Um, start seven oh five on the first and seven forty-five.
Thank you, Ms. Kent. Okay, so we'll take up order one oh five and set a public hearing on March thirty-first at seven oh five P.M.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that is approved. Thank you. And order one oh six, to set a public hearing on April seventh at seven forty-five P.M.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that is set. Also before us is order one oh three, this was your recommendation, President Flowers, on the city clerk salary. Any questions or comments or discussion? None?
I, I would just say that at this, now this is becoming routine, I think for us, councilors will remember that since this has been moved more clearly under the council's purview, we've had the opportunity to vote on these recommendations. As, in my role as president, I had the opportunity to meet with Ms. Kent, talk about her, her job performance, what's happening in her office, um, and then to be able to talk with the mayor and his team, also Mr. Perry, to try to figure out both what's fair and equitable for Ms. Kent, what matches, you know, her, her job performance, which I believe is strong, and then what's fiscally responsible as well. And so, I think where, where this recommendation lands, I think seeks to acknowledge the, the strong job performance that Ms. Kent does, running her office as a department head, while also staying in, in line, being fiscally responsible and in line with other department heads, or what's expected for other department heads in the administration side of things.
Thank you, President Flowers.
Thank you.
Um, I would entertain a motion to approve order one oh three.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that is approved as well. Okay, I believe that completes our agenda. Um, thank you for meeting earlier, our second finance and property meeting of the night. Um, and I would entertain a motion to adjourn committee of the whole.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and I would entertain a motion to adjourn the committee on finance and property.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, everyone. I'll call the full council back to order, and we will go to reports from committees. Ms. Kent?
Order number seventy-three, Committee on Finance and Property, to whom refer the matter regarding a transfer request of one million seventy-one thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars from the cer, city's Certified Free Cash balance to be placed in the city's stabilization fund, have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Recommend the council approve this request.
Questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Carries nine zero.
Order number seventy-three, the Committee on Finance and Property, to whom refer the matter regarding a transfer request of two hundred and fourteen thousand, two hundred and seventy-eight from the city's Certified Free Cash balance to be placed in the city's OPEB trust, have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Recommend the council approve this request.
Questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Carries nine zero, thank you.
Order number twenty-nine, Committee on Finance and Property, to whom refer the matter regarding Council Sweeney's proposal that the city council adopt a local option veteran property tax exemption created through section twenty-three of chapter one seventy-eight of the Acts of twenty twenty-four, have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Recommend the council approve this request.
Questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
That carries nine zero.
Order number seventy-two, the Committee on Finance and Property, to whom refer the matter regarding a transfer request of six hundred and twenty-eight thousand, six hundred and ninety-three from the city's Certified Free Cash to be placed in the Beverly Public School operating budget, have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Recommend the council approve this request.
Questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you, that carries eight one.
Order number seventy-four, to whom, the Committee on Finance and Property, to whom refer the matter regarding, uh, a transfer request of eight hundred thousand to cover costs associated with the repair and replacement of the city's fuel depot on the DPW campus, have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Recommend the council approve this request.
Questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
That carries nine zero.
Order number seventy-eight, Committee on Finance and Property, to whom refer the matter regarding a thirteen hundred dollar, thirteen hundred dollar grant, thirteen hundred thousand, no, one thousand three hundred dollar grant from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts MED Project Drug Stewardship Program to be utilized for cost of management and disposal of medication in the medication collecting receptacle at the police station, have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Recommend the council approve this request.
Questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
That carries nine zero.
Order number one oh three, from Finance and Property, to whom refer the matter regarding a recommendation for the city clerk's salary for FY twenty-six, have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Recommend the council approve this request.
Questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Carries nine zero, thank you.
Order number one oh five. Sorry, doesn't have a sheet. From Finance and Property, to whom refer, refer the matter regarding, um, a loan authorization of seven point five million to provide funding for the purchase and replacement of water meters throughout the city, has said to set a public hearing on March thirty-first for a special meeting at seven oh five P.M.
Thank you. Councilors, I would entertain a motion to set that public hearing as recommended for March thirty-first at seven oh five P.M. Thank you, all those in favor?
Aye.
That carries nine zero.
Order number one oh six, to, as a late file, the Committee on Finance and Property, to whom refer the matter regarding a loan authorization in the amount of seven point five million to provide the funding for purchase and replacement of water meters throughout the city, have considered said, and follows, set a public hearing on April seventh at seven forty-five P.M.
I would entertain a motion to set that public hearing as recommended by the subcommittee, April seventh, seven forty-five P.M.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Carries nine zero.
Difficult without my sheets. Order number thirty-B, the Committee on Legal Affairs, to whom refer the matter regarding Council Hausmann's proposed order for adoption of the Specialized Building Code by the Commonwealth's Department of Energy Resources, have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Submit the, accompany amend order, amended order, submit the, accompany order and recommend its adoption with the amended take effect January first, twenty twenty-six, rather than take effect six months from final passage. And this will be the first reading, which I wasn't ready for, so. Do you want me to open, or is it just this? Order for the adoption of Specialized Building Code in the year two thousand and twenty-five, being obtained by the city council of the city of Beverly as follows. The city of Beverly hereby adopts and incorporates into city ordinances the Massachusetts Specialized and Energy Code for the purpose of regulating the design and construction of buildings for the effective use of energy and reduction of greenhouse gas emissions pursuant to the entirety of twenty-two, twenty-five, CMR twenty-two and twenty-three, including appendices RC and CC, including future additions, amendments, or modifications thereto. This ordinance shall take effect on the date which is January, effective January first, twenty twenty-six. And this will go into the paper before final passage.
Thank you, Ms. First. So there can be a first vote tonight, uh, we need a motion to approve before we can have any further discussion.
Council President?
Yes.
Yes, may I make a couple of comments?
Uh, we just need a motion and a second before we can have discussion.
Okay.
So.
So moved.
Thank you, thank you, all right. Council Hausmann?
Thank you. Um, yeah, just a couple of things. Um, one is I want to thank my colleagues for, uh, the considerable attention that everyone has paid to this order. I know we've had a, a really good conversation around, particularly housing and, uh, the, the friction between housing and, uh, and this, uh, adoption of the specialized code. Through the course of those conversations, I think we've all learned a lot, including myself. I know members of the Clean Energy Advisory Committee have, uh, have learned a lot about this. I just want to say a couple of things, so I want to thank everyone for their, for their attention and consideration on this, and obviously ask, um, for a favorable vote. A couple, a couple of points. One is, the one change to this has been, um, to move the date of effectiveness from six months from final passage to January first of twenty twenty-six. That is something that, uh, both Clean Energy Advisor Committee and Dylan Patel, who was here from the Clean, uh, from the D O E R, uh, as well as myself, um, all think is the most appropriate. It gives the, uh, private sector and developers more time, more lead time to, uh, uh, understand, adopt, and, and, uh, work with, uh, the specialized code if it's adopted. Another thing that we heard, uh, particularly a lot for me in my conversations with Andrew DeFranza, and I know others have had this, this conversation as well, um, and, and, uh, you know, maybe Mr. Studd will have an opportunity potentially to, to speak this evening, but if he doesn't, I want to relay that, um, the Clean Energy Advisory Committee has, uh, thinks it's appropriate and has committed to making regular reports to the council regarding, uh, some of the issues, in particular raised by, um, Harbor Lake Community Partners, on the issues they have run into, uh, with some of their development, uh, projects in Beverly, and their concern about how, if at all, the specialized codes might adversely affect those. So ultimately Andrew DeFranza said he can live with this, but he would like to see certain things happen. One of those things, uh, are sort of regular updates, um, to the council about, um, where things stand in the specialized code and their impact on Beverly. Uh, the other, in, in particular, is some kind of working committee, uh, which I've already sort of made steps to form, which members of National Grid, um, Chris Copeland from Beverly Crossing, Andrew DeFranza, have committed to, which is to, uh, start having meetings to, to address some of the National Grid related, you know, hookups and cost issues, uh, that, uh, are being encountered. So that is sort of already underway, it's not formalized yet, there's not a complete organization structure around that, and I, but I, but people are committed to doing that, and I just wanted to pass along that, that information. And while they have other things that I could say about it, I won't, because we've had lots of discussions about it, so I will leave it at that.
Thank you, Council Hausmann. Council Saint-Hilaire.
Thank you, Madam President, and I'll be relatively brief as well. I just wanted again to thank Mr. Stru, uh, Studd and the Clean Energy Advisory Committee for presenting this proposal and for answering our questions. Uh, I also want to thank my colleagues for the discussion last week and, and previously on this, as Council Hausmann noted, I thought it was a very healthy debate and, and good discussion. And just as a reminder, you know, we are a green community, we've been designated that way by the state, we are a leader in addressing climate change in the city, Mayor Kay Hills made it a signature, uh, of his administration, and we have supported many, many initiatives over the years, including installation of solar panels at carports and arrays across the city, uh, electric vehicle charging stations, electric school buses, resiliency studies for our coastal parks, uh, construction of a lead silver certified Beverly Middle School, and, and those are just a few, right? Um, our track record demonstrates that we're leaders on this issue. With that said, we have to balance, you know, a variety of priorities, and we must act on what's in the best interest of our residents. This proposal is going to add costs to build, that's a fact, and it's going to add costs to own and rent a home in Beverly. Um, to me, uh, you know, based on the feedback I, I hear, affording a home in, in Beverly is already hard enough. Uh, I'm against passing along yet another mandate, another financial burden to our residents, and, and I'm going to be voting against this.
Thank you, Councilor, Councilor Sweeney, and then Council Feldman.
Thank you, Madam President. First, I too would like to thank Council Hausmann for introducing this proposal and for being a leader amongst the city council here in pushing forward the ball on, in terms of sustainability issues. And I'd also like to thank the work of the Clean Energy Advisory Committee and Mr. Studd in particular, and this has got to be a third or fourth public meeting on this proposal, which shows me your passion, um, not only for this specific proposal, but for the city of Beverly as whole, and I certainly appreciate that. I, like all of my colleagues on the city council, share a concern about the impacts of climate change locally here in Beverly. As I stated last week, my questions regarding this specific proposal are not because I believe that the general direction that Beverly is moving towards in trying to become a more sustainable commi, community is a bad thing, uh, but rather I raise them to determine whether this specific step, which is the proposal before us tonight, is one that we should be taking, or if it is one that might do more harm than good when holistically assessing its impacts with regards to future housing development and the issue of affordability. As we all know, Beverly became a green community within the last decade, which I think is a good thing. To do so, we adopted our current stretch code, one which is already fairly stringent and has led to the development of much more energy efficient housing units in Beverly, uh, particularly the large multifamily apartments that have been built recently. This has resulted in significant progress toward our climate goals. Additionally, it's worth noting that developers are already exceeding the current stretch code standards by utilizing incentives to generate clean electricity from solar panels and create more energy efficient heating and cooling systems. In fact, one potential proposed large multifamily building in Beverly has already committed to meeting passive house standards if it is to be built, uh, though I think everybody knows what I'm referring to, and I hope that building, that series of buildings is not ultimately built, uh, for reasons other than energy related ones. As this is the case, it limits the benefits of this proposal for Beverly going forward. If we already have a strong existing stretch code, and if developers are already looking to build to passive house standards for large multifamily buildings, then the benefit that Beverly will see from the adoption of this proposal in the form of reduced carbon emissions is marginal, because we've already made meaningful steps as a city toward reducing carbon emissions in new buildings, and we've set ourselves on a path to continue to do so as a city in the future. What that means is that ultimately, if this measure is adopted, we could end up in a situation where all it accomplishes is to simply add a new layer of mandated cost to any new building in Beverly, without providing enough of an offsetting environmental benefit compared to our current stretch code to make the trade-off worthwhile. As a city, we desperately need the creation of smaller housing units, especially small multifamily units, as Mr. Studd alluded to in his earlier public comments this evening, to help meet our housing needs without measurably altering the character of Beverly. Additionally, at a time when the cost of housing is through the roof and the cost of living has steadily increased, I don't think that we should be enacting measures that will inevitably raise the cost of constructing new housing units, especially if we're already moving in the right direction with regards to our sustainability goals. It should also be mentioned that there is some uncertainty about the future of state and federal green energy subsidies, which are needed to make these increased costs to building more economically viable for developers. On top of this, there is also a category of fate, state and federal incentives specific to construction and green energy initiatives in gateway cities in Massachusetts. Salem and Worcester, which have adopted this proposal, qualify for these incentives. Beverly does not. While this may end up proving to be an insignificant factor in the grand scheme of things, it is worth keeping in mind if our goal is to ensure that the construction of affordable housing in Beverly remains viable going forward. This specialized stretch code would also apply to standalone ADU, accessory dwelling units. After two years of work to pass an ADU ordinance with a goal of increasing the diversity and affordability of Beverly's housing stock in single-family residential neighborhoods without fundamentally altering the character of those neighborhoods, adoption of this code would make the already challenging economics of building an ADU that much more difficult. challenging economics of building an ADU that much more difficult. Lastly, this specialized stretch code would increase reliance on an electrical grid, and on National Grid in particular, that might not be ready for the increased load. While I appreciate the confidence that members of the CEAC have expressed in National Grid's ability to meet this increased load in the years to come, I still remain skeptical of their ability to do so without significant infrastructure upgrades and a need to continue leveraging fossil fuels to provide electricity if they are unable to increase their alternative energy sources such as wind, solar, hydro, or nuclear to meet the demands of powering the entirety of their electrical output. In that scenario, we'd be reliant on National Grid to make swift and significant improvements to their local electric transmission infrastructure, and we've seen firsthand in Beverly how poorly National Grid approaches such initiatives. If National Grid cannot manage this increased reliance efficiently, it could lead to problems such as lower-quality service or potential outages, especially during peak demand times. The housing units recently built in Beverly under our current stretch code are already much more energy-efficient than those of the past, even if not completely net zero. Additionally, future housing development in Beverly seems to be moving towards greater sustainability, regardless of whether or not we adopt this specialized stretch code. Therefore, if we adopt this proposal and it raises costs to a point that makes future construction costs prohibitive for both multifamily and smaller units without a compelling environmental trade-off, I believe we would be worse off as a city than we are today. Given that concern, coupled with current high housing prices and the cost of living in the North Shore, I will be voting against this measure. Thank you, Madam President.
You, Councilor. Councilor Feldman.
Yes, I do not want to belabor this point. I am supportive of this measure for a couple of reasons, not only because I think it's the right thing for the earth and our constituents, but I think it's the right move for the city of Beverly. As it's been said by both Councilor Sweeney and Councilor St. Hilaire, we are moving towards that, the developers themselves are moving towards this style of building anyway, and taking on this as an added piece of their budget and development for new builds. And I want to see the city of Beverly be able to capitalize on all of the advantages that would come with adopting this and putting it on paper, because right now, we are not reaping any of the benefits of that, and they would still be passing on those costs to the consumers regardless. And in the end, we're giving our constituents a better product. It would be a lower cost of energy and savings for the future of those people that live in, whether it's a, we saw from the data that the new homes being built are million-plus-dollar homes. Those are not costs that are going to be problematic for a first-time homebuyer trying to get into the housing market. And I just, I think it's a false argument to say some of the National Grid problems with communications and rates and payload, those exist regardless of whether we're going to have this put in effect or not. Those are all problems that we absolutely need to keep our foot on the gas. This isn't like solving the problem with the energy crisis by any means. It's, in my view, this is us putting teeth in something that we're able to then reap the benefits of. The only thing I'm actually, was concerned about, as soon as I saw that it was applicable to retrofitting municipal, older municipal buildings, and not just new buildings, it was, it was a no-brainer for me, because if I could, I thought we couldn't get one of the accelerator grants if we didn't have a new building on the horizon. But if we're talking about being able to use an accelerator grant for retrofitting, I'm just sad we can't get one in 2025 and 2026 if we have to wait till 2026 to adopt it, because I would love to see the city of Beverly be able to capitalize on some of these incentives while they still exist and while the builders are already doing it and meeting those standards anyway. So this is, to me, absolutely a no-brainer. The cost being passed on consumers is negligible, and I don't see how we couldn't, I couldn't do this for both the city and the future of our, our community.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Spang.
Thank you, Madam President. I will probably not say this as eloquently as Councilor Feldman, but I agree with the urgency to make sure that the city can access some of the accelerator grants and that funding. To that end, I would like to maybe have people think about conditioning, adopting this with the January 1st date. If the city can complete the municipal decarbonization roadmap and adopt the zero-emission-vehicle-first policy, those are the two other steps in the five or six step to become a climate leader community. So if the city can complete those two things by the end of August this year, then I think it makes sense for us to adopt the specialized code. If the city can't do that, then we're not going to be eligible for the accelerator grant until either late '26 or '27 at the beginning. So that's just another wrinkle that I wanted to throw in for consideration.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Bowman.
Thank you. I'm looking forward to the opportunity to support this ordinance change. As we've talked about, the process of discussing it has surfaced a number of other issues that residents are struggling with, none of which, I feel, based on what we've heard from numerous presentations, from lots of different perspectives, will be made worse by the specialized code, let alone worse in a specialized, worse by the specialized code in a way that's not balanced out by both the environmental benefits and the financial benefits to homeowners who are not just paying a one-off cost and throwing that money away, but actually investing in the future of their home, or renters who benefit from the lower costs and, and health benefits of energy-efficient homes. So the, and in addition to that, the financial benefits to the city. So to me, it is a process that has surfaced some different concerns, and I'm actually really pleased to hear the enthusiasm for greater action on affordable housing. If that level of enthusiasm had been the case when I introduced the accessory dwelling unit ordinance originally and we hadn't waited so long to take it up, we might have seen more small units already. In the year since it's passed, I think there's a dozen or more units that have been permitted, given all the current costs, all the, all the barriers to introducing them. So adding, adding protections for the people who live in those places to have energy-efficient homes and electric-ready homes is not going to slow that down, I don't think. I wish we had accelerated it faster, and I hope that those who are now committed to all options to promote affordable housing in our community are, are ready to act on that as well. And in the meantime, since that is not the question in front of us, I'm eager to support the specialized code adoption. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Hausman.
Yeah, I just want to respond briefly to Councilor Spang's comments. I can assure you that the Clean Energy Advisory Committee has those items on their agenda and are the very next things that they will be taking up, and, and, you know, sort of going through a similar process with the council, so that we can have thoughtful conversations about those and bring those forward for adoption by the council. So they are clearly the next steps following the action of its affirmative this evening.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Spang.
Yes, I raised it knowing that, and I think, you know, giving six months is a good enough time if we were talking originally about giving developers about six months' time to gear up for things. So that's, I didn't just pull the number out of a hat.
Yeah.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Hausman.
Yeah. If I may, are you suggesting that you will submit a formal amendment when, to this order?
Councilor Spang.
If I can move for that amendment now, if that makes sense, or I'm open to hearing other people's perspectives. But yes, it is my intention to move to amend.
Okay, if I may?
Yes.
Yeah. I would encourage you to not do that. I would encourage you to take at face value the work that the Clean Energy Advisor Committee has done. If this item passes this evening, I think that the, you know, the, the two items you mentioned, the roadmap and so forth, will be forthcoming and passed by this council. If this evening, if this does not pass, then those are probably, you know, perhaps a dead letter anyway. So I personally don't see the benefit of encumbering a clean vote on this item with those conditions. And I'm, I'm not sure exactly mechanically how that condition would operate. I mean, I suppose I can sort of see my way, but basically you're saying we would pass it, but then it would be unpassed if a certain date, by a certain date, certain goals are not set. And it's not clear to me that, you know, what your rationale is, say, for picking that particular date, it, you know, does that line up with some particular thing going on, and council is not in, in session then, in, in August? So I would ask and encourage you to reconsider that as a formal amendment rather than allowing this vote to pass unencumbered, knowing that those actions are the next steps that are going to be taken by myself and the Clean Energy Advisory Committee. So thank you.
Understood. It's my understanding that the municipal decarbonization roadmap and the zero-emission-vehicle-first policy would not come through the council, that those, that's at least the understanding that I have, is that those would not be coming to the city council.
That's my understanding as well.
Thank you, bet.
So this is a condition that we would put upon it to make sure that the city follows up and finishes the other two steps, so that we would be certified as a climate leader, because the next round of accelerator grants, the grants, the deadline would be the first Friday in February. So in my mind, if we have it, you know, all the steps done by August, that gives the city another six months to get ready for the first accelerator grant.
Councilor Hausman.
If I may, I'd appreciate perhaps a change in normal protocol, perhaps because Mr. Studd has been so involved and is so knowledgeable, that perhaps the council could give him an opportunity to, to comment on the, on the, the dialogue that Councilor Spang and I are having.
I think that only would make, I think we are having a discussion without really a motion and a second on this amendment. So I would say that if Councilor Spang wants to move this amendment, if it gets a second, we could continue with further discussion. But I'm not sure it makes sense for us to keep going in a hypothetical. I'm not sure we even should, process-wise, so.
I'll move to amend the motion to condition it upon the city completing the municipal decarbonization roadmap and adopting a zero-emission-vehicle-first policy by August 31st, 2025.
So that's Councilor Spang's motion is there? There is a second. Okay. So we could have further discussion at this point. Councilor Sweeney, I know you've been trying to get in for a while, so I'm going to go to you first.
Thank you, Madam President. My comments are to this specific amendment, so good timing. I understand the appeal of the carrot that is offered here through becoming a greener community and having access to grant funding. Council Feldman's point certainly well-taken. That funding could be put to very good use, and I personally can think of a handful of projects that we could utilize it. That being said, given the magnitude both of this proposal and potentially of, I'm thinking specifically about the vehicle, EV first policy, while I understand the benefit of the carrot, I think it's important that we vote on the merits of these policies individually as they come before the council. And if there is some skepticism about the merits of this policy towards the line of reasoning that I have introduced for why I'm going to vote against the proposal, then I encourage my colleagues to join me, given that while the additional funding is nice, there is a larger impact beyond just municipal government. This would impact private development across the city as well. And so I would say let's vote based on the merits of the proposal, and if there is some hesitancy and it's the funding that is leaning one way or the other, I would certainly consider my colleagues to perhaps reevaluate their stance. And then specific to the amendment Councilor Spang introduced, I don't want to put pressure on the administration to adopt one of the other conditional policies in order to help implement this if they didn't actually believe the merits of one of those other individual policies warranted adoption by the city. And I would be concerned about how the incentives would change on a conditional vote from the council in line with the amendment that you've introduced, Councilor Spang.
Councilor St. Hilaire. Councilor Hausman.
Yes, just to follow up on Councilor Sweeney's comments, one of my concerns would be regarding Councilor Spang's amendment is that it would tend to undercut the intent of giving the market, you know, developers in the marketplace a lead time to know what is coming, because if they think, well, it's coming, but maybe it's not coming, it sort of, you know, should we really sort of be prepared to gear towards it or not? So rather, I mean, part of the intention of, of putting the effective date out is to give the marketplace an opportunity to sort of prepare and know, have certainty, and how, you know, do their risk management around that. If you put August in there, it kind of throws off that, that whole function of, of setting that date out there. So, thank you.
Councilor St. Hilaire.
So I've already stated, I'm sort of against this whole, whole thing, but I guess in thinking about Councilor Spang's amendment, you know, it just strikes me that we're going to make a decision to do something based on another decision we haven't made yet and don't know the impacts fully of yet. I have a hard time tying one decision to another unknown decision. I would hesitate to do that. And I would also just say, you know, you know, I guess I'll leave it at that.
Councilor Bowman.
Thank you. For me, my support for the ordinance adoption or the code adoption is not dependent on, you know, receiving and using that million dollars for a much-needed project in a tight-budget environment. That's an added bonus of, of a policy that makes sense even on its own. And, you know, I think the ability of the council to add some weight to the administration and advisory bodies' decisions about those, those policy pieces, you know, we, we have a variety of tools to do that. So I think I would support a statement from the council, sort of that we are in adopting the specialized code, taking one further step towards, you know, meeting the requirements for those programs, and encourage the mayor's team to find a way to get those two other pieces in place in time. And we could use other tools, like, you know, holding meetings to ask for progress on them and things like that. So I would, I would be very supportive of that, and I think that may be more effective in addressing some of the, the other concerns about timing and still get us to a place where we're, we're fully qualified to receive the, the financial assistance in meeting some of our other additional goals that, that we've already been planning towards.
Councilor Spang.
I'm hearing that it may not be the will of the council to include this condition, and I just want to say that I'm fine with that. But I do want to be very clear that if we adopt the specialized building code tonight, it does not mean that Beverly becomes a climate leader community, and it does not mean that we're eligible for those grants. These other two steps need to be completed before we would qualify. So, you know, however people are voting on, that was, my main point was to try to drive that home.
Thank you, Councilor Spang. Mr. Studd, I know you sort of answered something. I want to just ask if you would go to the podium and just clear, for BevCam if they couldn't hear. Just to clarify what Councilor Spang said earlier, talking about her amendment, that the other two components would be something the administration and the city would put forth, that they would not be city council votes. I just wanted to see if you could just clarify that point.
Yeah, that's, that's correct. And she's identified the two outstanding items for certification in the Climate Leader Communities Program after adoption of the Specialized Energy Code. My understanding of the ZEV first policy is that it's an action that can be taken by the mayor. It is not a requirement to buy zero-emission vehicles instead of diesel or gas vehicles for the municipal fleet, but rather to consider and evaluate them, which I think is totally reasonable, given all the options in that space these days. And for the decarbonization roadmap, that builds directly on Resilient Together. It builds on a lot of the data that the city has already been gathering, and it's been discussed at CEAC meetings. We understand that process is underway. It's, it's my hope and understanding that that can be resolved this spring or early summer to align with the timeline that you laid out there.
Thank you very much, Mr. Studd. So we do have a motion and a second on Councilor Spang's amendment. So all those in favor of Councilor Spang's amendment? All those opposed? The amendment fails 2-7. Thank you. And thank you, Councilor Spang, for introducing it and for the conversation. So now we do So now we do have as well a motion and a second on 30B as amended in subcommittee for that effective date of January 1st, 2026. This is for our first vote this evening. It is not a final vote, not final passage. So all those in favor of the order as amended with the January 1st, 2026 date. And all those opposed? So that passes 6 to 3. And again, that is a first vote. So we will hear that for a second reading, second vote at a subsequent meeting. Thank you.
We'll have that chat all over again.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Stut, for, for staying with us and for being willing to jump in and help clarify that point as well.
Order number 77, the Committee on Legal Affairs, to whom refer the matter regarding a proposed amendment to downtown parking ordinance for Pleasant Street. The proposed amendment is for the first reading tonight, and it is proposed amendment to Chapter 270 Vehicles and Traffic as follows. Section 270-66 Downtown Beverly Parking District, B1 On-Street Parking Regulations Devices, C, the following on street locations will be regulated by parking regulations, regulations, devices unless specifically regulated otherwise in the Downtown Beverly Parking District. And that is on the location of Pleasant Street from Rantoul Street to Park Street.
Thank you, Ms. Kent. So again, this is also for our first vote this evening, is their motion to approve Order 77. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor carries 9-0, and we'll hear that one again for a final vote at a subsequent meeting.
Order number 69, the Committee on Legal Affairs, to whom refer the matter regarding an appointment of Daniel Allen, 24 Pickett Street, to serve on the Economic and Community Development Committee, have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Recommend the council approve this appointment.
Questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor, aye. Carries 9-0.
Order number 70, the Committee on Legal Affairs, to whom refer the matter regarding a reappointment for Suzanne Lamont, 20 Porter Street, to serve on the Historic District Commission, have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Recommend the council approve this reappointment.
Counselor Spang is recusing herself from this vote.
Oh, sorry.
Other questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor, aye. That carries 8-0. Thanks to Ms. Lamont for her willingness to continue to serve. Thank you, Counselor Spang.
Thank you.
I thought she was going to drink water.
She did before.
Lots of speculation about where Counselor Spang was going.
Order number 71, the Committee on Legal Affairs, to whom refer the matter regarding an appointment for Stanley Mendiguel to serve as constable, who considers said matter and beg leave to follow. Recommend the council approve this appointment.
Questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor, aye. Carries 9-0.
Order number 101, the Committee on Legal Affairs, to whom, whom refer the matter regarding a renewal of second-hand junk dealer license for Beverly Coin Jewelry Records and Estate Appraisals at 38 Rantoul Street, have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Recommend the license be granted.
Questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor, aye. Carries 9-0.
Order number 102, the Committee on Legal Affairs, to whom refer the matter regarding a renewal of a second-hand junk dealer license, Plum Consignment LLC, DBA Worthy Girl, 276 Cabot Street, have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Recommend the license be granted.
Questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor, aye. That carries 9-0.
Order number 81, the Committee on Legal Affairs, to whom refer the matter regarding a renewal of flammable stores license for Global Group Corp., 44 Dodge Street, have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Recommend the license be granted.
Questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor, aye. Carries 9-0.
Order number 82, the Committee on Legal Affairs, to whom refer the matter regarding a renewal of flammable stores license for Prime Energy Consultants, 491 Cabot Street, have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Recommend the license be granted.
Questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor, aye. Carries 9-0.
I agree.
Counselor Feldman.
Just for clarity, we voted on these as one, so I don't know if you can read and accept them as one. Just a thought.
Counselor Housman, you need to unmute if you, as chair, would like to.
Yeah, so I discussed the matter with the city solicitor today about whether or not we could vote for these in subcommittee as one group. And she said because they're of, of a identical class, that the subcommittee could do that. We didn't specifically discuss the full council, but I think if we can do, if the city solicitor says we can do it in subcommittee, there's no reason we can't do it as well in the, in the full, full council.
All right.
Great.
Thank you.
What you said about five minutes ago.
I didn't know that's how it would come out.
No, that's okay, because now I don't, my numbers are off.
Well, we're going 83 through.
Through 100.
Through 100 is what's left.
Is it 83?
Oh, because you did 81 and 82. So we could go 83 through 100, and that will take care of the rest of the group.
Okay.
Do you want me to read it? We're good. Well, I guess we, I guess we now know that the subcommittee reported it out as recommended. It's approved.
Of flammable stores licenses for all the rest of them.
For 83 through 81. So are there questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the orders.
And this is for what, which ones?
83 through 100 as a group.
Got it. Yep, just wanted to clarify. Yep, thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Carries 9-0.
Thank you.
That's really exciting.
I'm totally for it.
Order number 30, the Committee on Legal Affairs, to whom refer the matter regarding Council or Housman's letter regarding the adoption of specialized building code regulated by the Commonwealth Department of Energy Resources, have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Receive and place on file. I would entertain a motion to receive and place on file as recommended by the subcommittee.
All those in favor? Carries 9-0.
Order number 30A, the Committee on Legal Affairs, to whom refer the matter regarding Council or Housman's resolution regarding the adoption of the specialized building code by the Commonwealth Department of Energy Resources, have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Receive and place on file. I would entertain a motion to receive and place on file as recommended by the subcommittee.
So moved.
All those in favor? Carries 9-0.
Order number 30C, the Committee on Legal Affairs, to whom refer the matter regarding Council or Housman's summary of the proposed new 225 CMR 22 and 23 updated September 22nd, 2022, stretch energy code update to municipal op and specialized code relating to the adoption of the specialized building code, have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Recommend it be placed, received and placed on file. I would entertain a motion to receive and place on file.
So moved.
All those in favor? Carries 9-0.
Order 30D, the Committee on Legal Affairs, to whom refer the matter regarding Council or Housman's PowerPoint presentation regarding the adoption of the specialized building code by the Commonwealth Department of Energy Resources, have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Recommend it be received and placed on file. I would entertain a motion to receive and place on file as recommended.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. That carries 9-0. And thank you, Counselor Housman, for your work on that as well. That takes us to the end of our reports from committee. Are there any announcements or reminders from the council that you'd like to share? Counselor Rotendo.
It is your birthday today, correct? So I just want to remind the council, it is council president's birthday today.
Thank you, Counselor Rotendo. It is indeed my birthday. Thank you.
Great way to spend it.
Yes, there's, you know what? There's no way I'd rather have spent it than without. Thank you, Counselor Rotendo, and thank you all. Counselor Housman.
Yeah. If we could, what's the right way to put it? Suspend council rules? I would make a motion that we sing, President Flowers, "Happy Birthday," if there's a second to that. Or if not, I withdraw the, withdraw the motion.
Everybody else can do the separate counseling.
You back.
No, no, I'm good, I'm good.
I'll just know you're singing in your hearts. But I will thank you for the sentiment. And I will say, on, on the subject of singing, though, I do want to mention that, I know some people in this room saw it, somebody in this room had a child who was in it, but Beverly High School's musical production of the Addams Family musical, MSA Hilary was a part of that cast. But if you didn't get to see it, it was just an, an amazing presentation. And so our, our young people, the cast, the crew, the directors, the pit, I, the whole group was just, it's really impressive. And if you had a chance to see it, I think you'd join me in echoing, just what a celebration for our, our community. Counselor St. Hilary, I don't know if you want to.
Totally agree. They're both knights.
Yeah. But congratulations to the, the directors, the pit band, the cast and crew. They did an amazing job. Other than that, as folks heard tonight, we do have potentially a special meeting on March 31st. That would be specifically for a 7:05 PM public hearing on that loan authorization for the water meter project. I say potentially because if it turns out that it makes more sense for that to happen at our April 7th regular meeting, that special meeting will not be on our calendar. And so we will expect to hear in the next few days from the administration with that update, and then Ms. Kent will get that communication out to members of the council. But for those following along for the public, there will be a public hearing on this matter, either on March 31st at 7:05 or April 7th, 7:45. And our next regular meeting is our April 7th meeting, which will be at 7:00 PM. So with that, thank you very much to everyone. Thanks to Kim in the Bev Cam booth. Thanks to Mr. Stut and Ms. Visnick for hanging in with us the longest of anybody who is in the chamber tonight, aside from Kim. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much for adjourned. Good night, everyone.